6:04. And it is my pleasure and honor to call the Groton Board of Education regular meeting to order, and our first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Keller, our flag is behind us. And Mr. Keller, would you be willing to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ted, that's what happens when you're like in my eyesight. I will, and you made eye contact with me, and that's it.
That's it.
That's it. So Ms. Austin, I understand that there is no visitors or delegations for tonight's meeting. Is that correct?
I don't think we have anybody who's said, and I don't see anybody on.
No, I'm not doing communications here. I'm just asking for delegations or visitors or special recognition. Okay, super. Okay, so we are now on agenda item number three. And this is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton, and board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments from citizens portion of the board meeting. Citizens should, and we don't have a podium, though I do want to let the board know is that it looks like we most likely will be able to be in the annex for our next meeting. The town council are already in the annex, but I think that they are the quote unquote guinea pigs and making sure that the new technology is working. And it's my understanding is that our tech staff needs to go and be reintroduced to the new technology. But it looks pretty good for our regular board meeting, our regular board meeting to be at the annex. So just because my other portion is to say step to the podium, but there is no podium. So Ms. Joan, I don't know if there's anyone online that is showing interest?
I don't see anybody.
And there is no one here, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge.
Board, I am, the board that is here, I am sorry, I'm going to put this on a gallery because it allows me to see who's here and who's not. I did know that I got a correspondence that I shared with you to the board last week about the electric buses, and he want, and I believe he wanted to speak, and I kind of said for him to kind of hang out, that we get to it pretty early, and it's about 6:00, around 6:05. So if I could just take a deep breath, and I don't want to miss an opportunity for him to be heard.
So we're going to take a five minute deep breath?
Nope. Just want to see, see, see if we have a universal power that allows this person to come in or not. Always believe in the universe. All right, I am going to move us on. And it's so exciting to have student representatives. I want to let everyone know that Isaiah also reached out to me, and he is in California, and he thinks that that is a reason to like not come to a board meeting. I don't know where his priorities are. And so I am going to welcome Kate. I was going to say Kate, but I was like, I got scared, Zoe, but, and Zoe, I got Zoe. But we do have two members with us today, and so board, we are actually going to hopefully have three members. Maybe they will split up the meetings, maybe they won't, we don't know. But Kate is going to speak a little bit to us about the happenings. And that Kate, if you would like to introduce Zoe, that would be great. She happens to be sitting next to a board of ed member, and if you kind of look at them, they kind of look like they belong. No, she's much more prettier, you're right, Dean. Um, but yeah, but Zoe, I would like to welcome you as a junior representative to the board. And so welcome to your first regular board meeting as a student rep. And I do know that Kate and you will have to leave right after you give the report. And that is, that is great. And Zoe, I'll look forward to kind of finding time to spend with you and kind of talk to you about what happens at the board and ways that you may be interested in participating. Okay, super.
All right, so I'm Kate Spalshi, I'm a senior at Fitch High School. This is Zoe and Cass related. She's a junior at Fitch High School, and it's been super exciting that we get to be student representatives for the Board of Ed. So some of the happenings at Fitch right now, it's a really exciting time of year. There are a bunch of events happening this week, actually, at Fitch, it's our spirit week. And so today started that off, today was pajama day, which was, I think, tons of fun getting to see it, not only my peers, but also some of my teachers in pajamas. So that was a lot of fun. And then tomorrow is anything but a backpack day, which I don't know if any of you are familiar with what this is. But essentially what you do is you bring all of your school supplies in anything but a backpack. So tomorrow I plan to bring a small suitcase to school, and that will be my anything but a backpack.
Hopefully with wheels.
Yes, and bright pink with wheels. So that is the plan for tomorrow, so that's super exciting this week. And then we also have the pep rally at the end of this week, which Isaiah reached out to me today and wanted me to let you know that our pep rally is on Friday, and Ms. Scola is almost finished planning it. So I don't have a whole ton of details on what is going to be going on at pep rally, but I know in the past it's been super exciting. So we are definitely looking forward to that. And then he also wanted me to mention homecoming this Saturday, and the homecoming football game is on Friday, and we have a theme for our football game, and this one is going to be Pinkout in support of breast cancer awareness month. We are really excited about doing that. And then two other things I wanted to bring up. As most of you probably know, we have a new choir and orchestra teacher in our school this year, and she's been absolutely wonderful. And some of the things that she started up was a caroling group. So we are preparing a bunch of songs right now, I'm part of this group, preparing a bunch of songs right now, and to hopefully be able to go and sing at like retirement homes, nursing homes, out and about in our community, and hopefully bring some holiday cheer into that. And then the Chamber Choir Orchestra Band Concert Choir, all of our musical ensembles have a concert this Wednesday night at 6:30. If y'all would like to join us, we'd love to see you there. And then Chamber Choir is also singing the National Anthem at the pep rally on Friday, which is our first big event in front of the school. I'm also in Chamber Choir. That's our first big event in front of the school, so that is very exciting. Yes, at Fitch High School.
What time?
6:30.
I think I sent it to you already.
It went into an email today.
So I sent it.
We'd love to have you all there if you can make it. But I believe that's just about everything I wanted to mention. Okay. So thank you.
Yeah, any questions for our student reps?
We welcome them, and I told them a little bit about our P-Caps convention. So I want to make sure I get them that information because they actually do a special day for our students, and the students always get so much out of that. Just being able to talk to other students who have the same roles and to be able to see what's happening with them. And so I want to make sure that you get that information. So I'll have Joyce send it out to you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you for coming. Good night.
Bye, thank you.
And Dean, thank you for sharing your family with us, that's kind of cool.
Because they've already graduated.
She's the tailor.
Yes, but it's kind of cool to, we'll be able to spend the next two years with her, so that would be nice.
The last two years together, I'm afraid. And we're sort of in that, we're seeing the tunnel, you know, the light at the end.
Oh, yeah.
You can't, you won't be able to wait until your kids are coming. I'm going to miss the whole cars when you wear stuff.
Yeah, I hear you. So I'm going to move us along. And we have been really looking forward to this part of our meetings where we get to see our staff. And I will, actually, I'm going to let Susan, I'm going to let you introduce it.
Okay, so I know Tom is here with us, and he's gonna, with the, virtually with the remote control, be able to help us with the slides.
I think Mark's gonna.
Oh, Mark has it.
Present this.
Okay.
I do, are you ready for it?
Well, I wanted to first introduce and bring up Peter Bass, whom you all know, and Jamal Davis. And maybe if you sit at the table so they can hear you really well. I know that Peter has another important engagement to go to, so, and he actually came first in the presentation, so that works out nicely. But what I'd like to ask the board members to do that will really help us is if we let the administrators go through the presentation, and at the end, after we've heard the Groton Middle School presentation, we ask questions. So if you have a really important question, just jot it down. And when they finish with the presentation, because oftentimes when you ask a question, it's there, but it's later on in the presentation. So let's get through the presentation and then ask the questions, and then I'll ask the high school staff to join us as well. Susan, any abbreviations, could they name what they mean for the public? Yes, if we have any abbreviations on the slides, we'll say the whole name, and we'll try to explain it as we go. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, I think we're ready, Mark. And all of you should have received a hard copy. There are lots of slides, there's a lot of information to talk about here, but the most exciting part is the so what, now what? So what are we going to do about the data? How do we put this into action?
All right.
I think we're going to have to get the right slide up, the presentation part, Mark.
Ready for slide two?
Can you put, can you put it in the presentation mode?
I haven't used Google Slides, I always use PowerPoint. Let's see.
Tom, do you have any recommendations here?
Mark, if you click that view only thing, that yellow button in the top middle, what is that? It should let you edit it, it's not.
It says request edit access.
Press that for me really quick. Just say send.
This is where it would be nice to have some background.
Yeah, let me share my screen, Mark, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Oh, there you go.
All right, so let me orient you to this slide. S-Back ELA stands for S-Back ELA, which is the
Smarter Balance.
Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, English Language Arts Performance Index for Grade 6.
And remember B for blue and book. That's how we keep them straight, we color code them.
When we look across the bottom there, the 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019, and then continue to go along, you'll see the light blue bar is Groton students, and the dark blue bar is state connected. It's worth to note that this is not a cohort comparison. This is how our sixth graders did in each of these years. So the sixth graders in 1718, the sixth graders in 1819, and so on and so forth. It's also important to remember that in 1718 and 1819, this represented students when they attended both Cutler, former Cutler and Westside Middle Schools. Also, the blank space was when they attended Cutler and Westside, but we all went home in March and did not take S-Back that year. In 2020, 2021, as we know, we came back to school in a hybrid mode. And you're forced out roughly a month's worth of school days. The totally woke in the state did not report their average for that year. And then last year, 2122, we can see how our Groton students at GMS did in comparisons to the state. If you look at the 1718, 1819, you can see that we were within shooting distance of the state. And then we went down a bit despite opening a brand new school, and despite the pandemic, our sixth grade students in 2020, 21, all things considered, I feel fair, fairly well. And then last year, we edged above the state for our students in grades six.
And remember, this is not a percentage, the performance index is a target.
Correct.
The ideal target for all of us is 75, to reach 75 by 2030.
Next slide, please. Move on to grade seven, the acronyms are still the same. And you can see that the way that the data is laid out is also the same. And again, these are the seventh graders in each of the years. Close to the state in 1718, a little bit above the state in 1819, no data for 1920, no comparison data, but we went down a bit from 1819, the seventh graders in that year, that's a little bit less than the seventh graders in 1819. And then up a bit last year and ahead of the state. And this is something, you know, as we look at six, seven, and eight for ELA, if you would ask us to look at our crystal ball as a pandemic began, if you had asked us, how will we do in language arts in comparison to math? We, I would have predicted our language art scores would probably dip a bit, but not nearly as much as math. And I think we saw that in the national news as well today that those trends do remain consistent. Next slide, please. Same orientation, grade eight, 1818, 1819. We were a bit above the state overall in 1718, a little bit less in the state in 1919, 1920, we did not get the test, took a bit of a dip in comparisons to the previous two sets of data. 21 and up a little bit last year and even ahead of the state. Now we'll move on to math. Grade six. Same orientation. Right now we're talking about math. And so the green bar is our mathematical data set for Groton, and the dark blue bar continues to be the state of connected. So we were a bit behind the state in 1718, roughly the same margin in 1819. We took a dip in 2021 and came up a bit last year, and needs to slightly add to the state. Grade seven. Similar shape to the data, close to the state. In 1718, down a bit below the state in 1819, took a dip, actually saw with the other sets, in 2021, came up a bit, and actually a hundred and above the state in grade seven for last year. Ready? And relatively similar, 1718, we're a bit further above the state than all the other data sets. You can see that they're quite similar in 19, took a dip in 2021, and we're smack dab right at the state last we did in 2122. Let me move on to the Next Generation Science Standards, that's NGSS Performance Index for grade eight. Grade eight is the only year in the middle school level in which this assessment is given. So you're very close to state in 1819. 2021, the state did not report their data, but you can see you definitely took a dip back here. And a bit of a bounce back last year, and again, are very close to the state, last year's data.
And we had spoken about this when Tom showed you the NGSS data across the district. And we've shared that even though it's in eighth grade, it's really the, what they're evaluating is really all the middle years, six, seven, and eight.
Correct.
So it's really important that we do those IABs each of the years. And the same thing is true for fifth, it's really three, four, and five, and 11th is ninth, and then 11. So it's comprehensive exam over three years.
On this slide, you can see, this is our S-Back ELA for last year, the average performance index for all three grades combined in comparison to all the other Alliance districts. See, Groton was first amongst the Alliance districts, which is nice to see. Then math, we're close second.
With our friends in Vermont, we're back in Fort Worth, Vermont.
This slide gives us a snapshot of last year, how our students did performance index by race. And let's see, but I'd like to point out to you that some of the data sets are so small that we really need to take those into consideration. This is data that Tom was nice enough to work on and they come up with us because the data sets are so small for some of our categories, then the state doesn't recognize them as such. So you have to take it with a bit of a grain of salt, but it does give us points to ponder as we move forward. It's helpful for conversation.
So this is all Groton kids?
Mm-hmm.
All Groton.
Six through eight.
Six through eight. And the ELA, the B for blue and book, and the green for money and math. We actually color coded them so that they would kind of make sense. And you all received the full, the full charts. And you see that American Indian, Alaskan natives, there's only seven children in the community, and five of native Hawaiian, another Pacific. So that really isn't enough to really give us, you know, the larger the number of the population, it really gives us more valid data.
Then you see here, again, this is only our eighth grade students who took the NGSS Next Generation Science Standards assessment from last year. I mean. Again, same caution, if you look at that full year number. You all take the lead on this next portion, which is where the rubber meets the road for us as we move forward.
Thank you. So, you know, based on the data, based on what we just shared, right? We definitely see that we have had some gains in ELA, and we've also had some gains in math, but comparatively prior to the pandemic, there are some, some drops that we need to consider. And with that information, we felt that there were three priorities that we wanted to focus on. The first priority was to really get to the point in terms of a system approach that we're going to use this summative data, the S-Back data, in a way to inform our instruction. And so what we did this year was really provide access to all our teachers, particularly our, our language arts teachers, and our math teachers, and our science teachers, to be able to look at the data, but make sure the data was accessible to them. The, the state through EdSite Secure really offers up the opportunity to break that data down into meaningful parts. And so what we were able to do is take that information and share it out to our staff, and our staff have been able to look at that. And so that's, that's the first priority. Again, review summative data with teachers to inform instruction. The second important priority is to continue to develop a comprehensive multi-tiered system of support, which basically means that we want to be able to use assessment beyond that of the S-Back, additional assessment sets, formative assessments, interim assessments, and I'll go over each of those acronyms in a moment, to continue to monitor our students' progress. We want to make sure that our instruction intervention is meeting the needs of our student. And to be able to do that, we have to have tools available for our staff. And so our assessments, as you can see there, are focusing on successful assessment practices, because we don't want to over assess, but we do want to make sure that we assess enough to gather pertinent information. So again, we begin with the screener, our screener in this case is the S-Back. So we look at that data first. We use that information to determine how we need to focus instruction at the core level or the tier one. And then we use that information for placement for students in the tier two and tier three, and I'll get to that in a second. Part of that assessment piece, a very important piece, is continuous progress monitoring. So what we've done over the last several years is we've been one of the first districts to really integrate the interim assessment blocks, the IABs. And these are formative assessments that mirror the S-Back. So students not only are getting familiar with item sets, they're also being familiarized with working with the dashboard because the S-Back is a web-based platform, and so it's important that the students understand how to navigate that as well. So the interims allows, allows us to do that, and allows us to progress monitor. You know, are our units of study, are they, one, aligning with the S-Back, which basically is a reflection of our, you know, our standards? So we want to make sure of that. And then the benchmark, and so what we've done this year, well, last year to start, we've utilized what is called Lexia Rapid, and that is our language arts benchmark assessment. And we've done that three times a year, and the data shows that when you, you know, provide a benchmark assessment three times a year, then you're able to monitor growth. And so we want to set, you know, growth targets, and so we've been able to do that with the Lexia Rapid. For math, we don't have something that's similar to that. So what we've been focusing on this year is utilizing our unit tests. And unit tests are great tools, again, because they do operate as a summative assessment, but you also can use them as a formative assessment. And really, again, a formative assessment is really informing our instruction versus ended year to see if they have achieved mastery. Part of number two, that multi-tiered system of support, we have our tiers of intervention. So I want to spend a little bit of time just explaining this for those who may not be familiar with a multi-tiered system of support. So at each tier, tier one, tier two, and tier three, you want to have effective instruction. In tier one, that is our high-quality instruction. For example, for ELA, we use Teachers College. Teachers College has been very successful in us over the years of increasing our performance on our S-Back because it lines with Common Core. CPM3 is a connected math project. And what we've done with that, for those of you who've familiar with it, is we've used more application in our math. So now the students can see, see it in, you know, real life application, and that has been very successful. Project Lead the Way is where we meet that, that NGSS. And so Project Lead the Way curriculum, as well as, you know, STEAM curriculum, really allows our students to be exposed to things like science, engineering, you know, technology with our coding classes and things of that nature, robotics. And then the last one is NYPD, is obviously the framework in which we focus on to create rigor across, you know, all disciplines. And so that's the middle years program. And again, that's actually, you know, six to grade 10. But within tier one, we also want to make sure that while we're providing high-quality instruction, that we have differentiation and scaffolding instruction. So we want to meet the students where they are within the classroom. And basically, you're talking about 80% of the students that should be able to meet grade level expectations at the tier one. When students are not able to meet that based on the progress monitoring, based on the benchmark, then we look to provide more targeted instruction. That targeted instruction is usually for about that 10% of students and, or 10 to 15% of the students. And so there, we were really looking on, for example, in ELA, we're saying, okay, at this level, students are reading to learn, so we really want to focus on vocabulary and improve in comprehension if it's formative, informative instructions, or reading, or should say, or more literary. So we want to focus on that in tier two. In math, we're looking more to focus on priority standards to support those students. So again, the key is to make sure that we are always focusing on grade level. And then tier three is where we get more intensive, it's individualized. We use diagnostic testing to really determine the needs of those particular students. And we're really helping these students. And we're really helping these students, um, focus on their growth targets. They may not, um, be at the proficiency level yet, but we still want to establish goals in which we can get there. And how do we do that? By really knowing their individual needs. And so that's that tier three. And then the last of the three priorities is a collaborative approach. What we feel here is that if we can increase our, our teacher's collective efficacy and, and, it research shows that that is the, one of the top effect size, sizes for student improvement. So here we really want to focus on all levels. First, we want to focus in the classroom. So we want to have that collaborative approach amongst the, um, teachers in that gray level, in that discipline, to collaborate and talk about, you know, how their students are performing, what successes they're seeing, what areas need that we need to focus on collectively. That happens at the classroom level. We're able to do this because we, you know, with our T L I days and also in, in some areas, we have, um, time for them to collaborate. And we also want to collaborate at the team across disciplines. So we're able to do that, uh, through our common plan time against our T L I as well. Department and gray level, uh, having opportunity for us to see it, uh, you know, in a bigger picture. You know, that vertical alignment as well. And then building in obviously, you know, that school, school of family. So building, we're setting obviously our building goals. We have in the years, uh, last couple of years really focused on S E O. Now we're focusing back more on the academic piece. And then that family and school engagement, we really, uh, believe in partnership with our families. And so getting the families, um, able to, uh, understand what our objectives are, uh, is the key there.
Sorry guys, I've gotten this filter agent has an update for you. Mark, do you have a recommendation about what I should be doing with this? Cause it sounds like if I don't do anything, it's going to update for me and I don't know what that means for. Or just being able to stay online.
A system restart may be required. Do you know anything about that, Tom?
I would make someone else be, uh.
Yeah, just in case, cause it's, it's going to take down your video if it actually restarts the computer.
All right. So where are we?
Mark will remain online, but the unfortunate thing is the camera will go down in the conference room.
All right, high school, you got eight minutes.
So I will entertain questions for our middle school staff, please. Liz.
I noticed the numbers about the numbers of kids there on, uh, the twenty twenty one. Summit index scores by race ethnicity. And I noticed especially in the last two columns or even all the columns, but you know, two or more races, the number that we tested was one oh seven. White was number tested was three fifty five. That's for, um, index scores. But then I flip over to the next one for the NGSS, the numbers are much lower. Now it makes sense to me. This is all six, seven and eight and that's just. I apologize. Thank you very much.
Andrea, could you just run this portion of the meeting so I can figure out how to get this going? So I don't know if anyone's got questions up there. I can't see. So I'm just, I don't want us to lose. So I, I'm just asking if there's anyone has questions. Beverly, I will recognize Beverly.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no, not a problem. Um, thank you, Peter and Jamel, uh, for the presentation. I, I do have to say that years ago, we almost had this, we had the same exact problems years ago that you're having now. With our black and African-American students and Hispanic and Latino students not doing well at all. That they really need more help. And I don't, it just seems like we're not, I, I don't know why we're still having this problem with that. Ethnic group that they're not progressing like they should be. And I hear what you're saying, but to, to, to review the data and with teachers to inform instructions. I mean, that's something we should be doing anyway. We should always be using the data to help us inform instruction. So tell me how your plan that you just gave us differs from what you have been doing in the past. Cause some of the stuff that you were talking about that you're going to do seems like things you should already be doing. So can you tell me how your plan that you just presented is different than what you've been doing in the past?
Absolutely. So, uh, Beth, I, I know it's been some years, um, but, and welcome back to the board. Too bad you're not here in person. I would love to see you again. But I, I will tell you that over the last year, we have really focused on tier one instruction. And, um, tier one supports and strategies specifically designed for us to, get to know our students best because only when we know our students best. And that includes all students of all races and ethnicities. Really getting to know them, uh, will help us to be able to instruct them. It's no longer, I'm going to get up in front of the classroom and I'm going to teach my lesson based upon, uh, some data. But no, I, I need to know specifically who is in front of me, what is their background, what makes them tick? What, what's happening, um, as much as I can know with their, with their family. And we've, we've taken steps in this area. We've also, um, do our, uh, additionally through our D E I initiative. Continue to, to work in this area. I'm going to let Jamal speak a little further to this. Cause I know he has more to say.
No, no, I think, you know, you kind of hit it in this kind of in a nutshell, right? The, the, the argument that I would, I would push forth that it, where we are different from we were in the past, is that personalized learning. But that personalized learn, learning is, is beyond that of, of what we probably traditionally focus on. We're taking into the cultural aspects. We're trying to increase, uh, representation in not only, uh, with, within our classroom, but within our instruction, but with also within our curriculum. So we are hoping, okay, and research has shown that when you do create a more inclusive environment for, for students, where they feel valued, right? So that whole student approach, uh, performance improves. And so that's, that's the commitment that our, our teachers are, are taking and that leadership is committed to. Really, uh, focusing on what culture responsive teaching is really about. And it's not, it's not about, uh, a necessary simple strategy. It's a, it's about a way of being. And so we really want to be committed to that. And so that's where I think we are different from the, the years past.
Okay, um, good luck with that. Um, it just sounds more of the same. And it seems like that, that's something we should have been doing throughout the years. We should have always been doing that. But if you're thinking now you're going to really focus on doing that, great. Another question I have is, um, it seems like in the scores. There's a drop. You go from six to seventh in the math and the ELA, you go six, seventh. And in the eighth grade, there's a drop. Um, do you have any ideas on why, why it drops in the eighth grade?
You want ELA, math?
Yeah, ELA and the math scores from six, you know, in the grade six and seven, we, we're not hitting the target. But yeah, the higher than when you get to grade eight. So why is there a drop when we get to grade eight from six, seven? And then you go to grade eight and you see a big drop, not a big drop, but a, you know, a drop.
Were you able to show, uh, six, seven and eight?
Can we go, what, this is six?
Our last year, we're sixty seven. Sixty seven point seven, great seven, sixty two point four.
Yeah, like say the math for grade seven was sixty and then you go to grade eight and it's fifty five. And, and like grade six, it was fifty eight. So what, what do you, what do you think? Why is there a drop in the grade eight score? I know they're different students, but do you have an idea?
There are lots of variables at play. And, and we, we certainly could dig deeper with regard to, um, absentee rates and number of students who, um, were, were, were present, um, throughout year for instruction. We could take a look at how they were, um, the percentage of students who took the test back in, in twenty twenty one at home versus, in school. I, I think there are lots of variables, Beth. And, and you're right, there, there is a, a slight, slight downtick in that grade eight. And that's something that we do need to take a closer look back, look at, particularly as we move forward, looking at performance index data, year over year, because that does really speak to instructional trends at a particular grade level. So I agree with you. I don't have, uh, an answer that would say, aha, this is why, but it's something we're going to continue to look at.
I, I just have to say, as a minority myself, um, it's very disappointing for year after year after year, to see our minority students really lagging behind. So I really hope that we can get a grip on that and that next year or in two years or before my stint on the board is over, that I, I could see some real progress with our minority students.
I can tell you it's a priority. I would also caution that the data set that you're looking at is really, uh, rough data and a snapshot. So, but please do know that it is a major priority for our school.
Especially since, um, we want to offer the middle year program to all students. And, um, you know, our African, uh, black and Latino students are going to need a lot of support to, to really challenge them and for them to do well in that vigorous middle year program.
Our, our goal is to meet the needs of every single student. But with particular focus on looking at those, um, those groups that are not, that, that are achieving at, uh, uh, levels less than, than other groups. So we want, we want to make sure that we are, you're looking at not only the, um, the achievement gap, but as, as Jamal talks about frequently, the opportunity to get, making sure our students have, the opportunity to succeed in that, that we are meeting the specific needs of students so that they can succeed. Because each student's needs are different than others.
I also want to orient you Beverly, that when out of the gate, I said that the number of students represented in each of these categories differs. If you look at the white student population, the number is three hundred and fifty five. So as compared to sixty in the African-American group. So just that you've got a much larger cohort that you're testing. So that does make a distance, that does make a difference statistically.
I'm going to recognize Matthew and then Dean, Matthew, before you speak. There's a very good chance that, um, this, that program that is going to be updated, is going to shut our camera down. We're not going to lose anything because Phil is now the host. And, but as soon as we get reboot, rebooted, our camera will come back on. We're not on a break, but, but when that hap, do you know how much time we'll have? Cause I want to get, I want us to at least get done with the middle school and then we'll take a break for the rebooting.
What else, what I'll say is, Mark, um, if it didn't happen in that, if it, we've been going, going more than nine minutes since that word came up, we're probably okay. Because we got a message today from I T letting us know that it may or may not, need you to reboot depends on where, where your system is. So if we haven't actually rebooted yet, you're probably.
Yeah, because we've been going for about forty, we, we've been, this has been a fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five minute, um, presentation. So. Matthew and then Dean.
Thank you. I, I'm embarrassed to say that after listening to this, I am really confused. I understand the impacts of COVID on education. And I'm gratified to see us clawing our way back. That's a great thing. Where I am confused is the relationship between target index, that an ideal is seventy five, and competency. So I'm trying to understand what does it mean in terms of grade level standards? And, and I'm scratching my head. I don't understand it. For example, if we reach the goal of seventy five on this index, what does that mean in terms of the percentage of students who would be at grade level? I mean, how do we translate this data into something that, is quantifiable?
I think Tom can probably help us out with this as well.
Yeah, that, that, it is a research-based system that the state has pursued a reporting performance index. I'll speak a little bit with Tom. Uh, I'm sure it is, is more, more knowledgeable in this area than I am. But from what I know, they say that seventy five is the ultimate target for students. So that what it speaks to is the amount of improvement in your achievement across the board, across all levels. That so they're achieving that seventy five percent target, you're, you're reaching the, the desired achievement levels.
I, I understood that, but I also remember reading some of the other data sets that were shown earlier. Where across many men, not all, but many, many of the data sets, we were showing twenty-five, thirty percent. In one case, close to forty percent of kids in a particular cohort, uh, at the low grade level, whether it was math or, or ELA. And I mean, the ideal is that a hundred percent of the kids are at, at grade level. We may or may not ever get there, but if we get to seventy five percent on this, this index.
I see, I see Tom is raising his hand. So I'm actually wondering if Tom can help answer that.
Thank you.
Sorry guys, I didn't want to just speak over everyone. Um, so there is not a perfect conversion, from a state index score to a percentage of students who meet grade level proficiency. A, a rough conversion is that a seventy five index equals seventy percent of students at or above grade level standard. That is not a perfect, there is a slight range that can actually fall within that seventy five percent, um, index score. But roughly speaking, you're talking about a seventy percent of your students at or above grade level. So that, that is the target that C S D sets.
Well, I, I hope we get from where we are to seventy five, but at seventy five will be at a, if I'm hearing you correctly, about seventy percent of grade level. And golly, that's still a long way to go to help our kids. There's no criticism. It's just kind of daunting.
We have work ahead of us.
We have work ahead of us.
Thank you, Matthew. Dean?
Yeah, um, piggybacking what Beverly said with respect to the data, I, I charted or tried to chart it. And writing. Uh, I understand that when you, that your sixth graders, the tested sixth graders, aren't automatically, you're testing seventh graders or automatically you're testing eighth graders, that they are not the same groups exactly. But when I chart everything by, by year and then by grade and draw diagonals, to see how the hypothetical sixth graders tested, when it was sixth graders that became seventh graders the next year, then became eighth graders the year after that, that's impossible. I know we have a gap year. I noticed that in some cases, if you presume that they're in the same group, you see some improvement. So for example, in the ELA, the sixth graders in seventeen, eighteen scored sixteen, five, she's a score. The number was sixty nine point one, went up to seventy nine, seventy one point two. You do see this a few times. Uh, you also see drops. And again, probably for the same reasons that I've given before, there's no direct explanations. We will blame COVID, I think, for a while. But when I look at it, I kind of see the same thing as they move through the grades. Quite often I see the scores drop or there's a marginal improvement. Sometimes as a, one case is a nice improvement. Uh, but, uh, that's, that's the one thing I wanted to point out. I had no real question. I think it's been answered at this point. Uh, but you're, I, I found it useful to, like I said, to do, to do this. The second question I had is, had it had to do with, uh, the racial breakdown. And I understand, I've, I've been looking at this stuff for ages and ages and ages. And I know that these categories come by mistake and that they are aggregates. And I'm not sure whether it is, outside identified, and this is a small point, this, this one right here is a small point. outside identified, and this is a small point, this this one right here is a small point, or self identification, because I I run into, for example, people that ordinarily, before they open their mouth, you don't know who they are, you'd say, oh, they're African American. In fact, they're from Dominican Republic and identify as Hispanic. So I don't know if that would change our numbers, you know, what we're the other. But that is something that I that I watch out for. I go by what people call themselves. So the question I had is, if you're going to take the data, so you would look at it and say, notwithstanding the difference in numbers, you know, the the two or more races or the white or how many black, African American, et cetera, that the sample sizes are not the same. So be careful, take the scores, take these numbers with a grain of salt. Leaving that aside and saying, well, this this shows something. This indicates there may be a problem here we should be looking at. I would not then automatically say, if I have a black or Hispanic student in my class, that therefore fill in the blank with respect to background and et cetera. I don't make that assumption. I could say, well, it is well known that historically, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But with respect to a live person in front of me, I do not make the assumption that because someone is white, therefore someone is black and therefore. So I would, I would look at this and say, we may be having a problem. I would not be surprised. But when it comes to actual individualized instruction, I I would hope that we are not proceeding on the basis of, well, my student is black and therefore. I want to know what they're doing, regardless of of who they are. Because we all know that people come from all sorts of different backgrounds. There may be greater or lesser tendencies socioeconomically, et cetera, but you know, there's so many exceptions to the so-called rules. And I would be very careful about, you know, folks honing in too much on the actual racial background, ethnic background of the student from the live person.
So we're talking about individualized instruction, understanding sort of culturally where they might be coming from, but it's individualized, right?
Again, when you say cultural, are you are you making an assumption that if someone's black, that therefore their culture must be like, fill in the blank?
I think that I would, I think that I would be like you and I would ask for their self identification. But that's just me who doesn't have to worry about which box. But you're right.
They come from different parts of the world.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. Any other questions? William?
So regardless of the subject, what are we doing about their test-taking skills? Are we implementing anything that addresses test-taking skills? Because with standardized testing, a lot of it relies on whether the students understand how to take tests, how to be comfortable, not be nervous or anxious about it. Now, having come from other school districts, you know, there was always a lot of things that took place the week before any standardized testing would take place. They would do these, you know, yoga, they would do all these things to to get them. But they will also teach them that this is the trick that they're trying to get you at. Are we doing anything to address that?
Yes, we are. And I think this is a very important piece of it. We've got to recognize that this is, when I say this, I'm talking about the aspect of some of this, it's 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 one moment in time. Right? It's it's high stakes. And so to your point, we do have to consider ensuring that the students are in the best mindset to be able to perform. So we are utilizing IIBs, those interim assessment box, which are basically mirrors of the S-Back, have an opportunity to get exposed, not from just from the point of taking a standardized test, but familiarizing. So the what's called the tide system, which is the the testing engine that we use. You can actually pull in our our teachers to pull out examples from the test. And they go through, how do you how do you navigate this particular item? Right? What are some of the things that you need to be familiar with? Obviously, the terminology is one, how the question is being asked. And also just being able to just know where the different buttons that you have. So to your question, yes, they do spend time about right before testing is about a week that we give them to really do some test prep practice. But this is also happening throughout the year.
Bev? Sorry.
Yeah, that's a good point that William brings up. Because when I used to teach GED and the students would take the math test, I used to tell them, don't waste time on on problems that you you definitely don't know. Do the ones that you know first and then go back to the other ones. And 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 that's a test-taking skill for math. Because if you don't know one half times one fourth, and you're wasting five minutes, that's five minutes you could have spent on problems that you know. So that's a good point that William brings up. Are we teaching them test-taking skills?
Liz? Introducing disciplinary. I I noticed that you mentioned that you're doing this, you're doing inform instruction, especially with your math, your science and your ELA. But what about the rest of them? Are you are you doing this cross-curricular? I mean, let's face it, you know, I'm a social studies teacher forever. You know, how is social studies supporting these these elements? How is your, you know, any any of the the specials, you know, what are you doing in that respect?
That's a good question as well. So one of the things for the S-Back, ELA, there is different targets. And so in one target area, you have informational tech. So for example, that's a great opportunity for our social studies to be able to have students exposed to finding key ideas, understanding key vocabulary. These are all different targets that students need to demonstrate in the S-Back. And so we've asked our our social studies teachers to take that on and practice that with the IIBs as well in that particular area. We've done that with science as well. And so science and our social studies teachers have taken a role. So not only is NGS being done in the science class, but science teachers are also taking on practicing the IIBs. So we've we've created, you know,
So a specific math IBS would really integrate nicely and correlate with what's happening in science.
In addition, we really have professional learning based on the the latest grant that we have on reading and writing across the curriculum. So Cornelius Minor will be here tomorrow, zooming in, versus ELA teachers, but then we're bringing social studies, science, the whole teams together to look at ways that they can build these units of study that would encourage them all to be working on reading and writing in the content area and more of an MIP project and interdisciplinary projects.
Yeah, that's that's, I think that's essential that we, you know, we continue to support our teachers that are not directly, you know, ELA, math or science, but everybody else that, you know, it's not, it is out all of our jobs to teach, you know, how kids how to read, how to disseminate information. And I want to say thank you for doing that because I think it's so important and to keep that message going, that's essential to help our kids to succeed. But thanks.
Trying to be mindful of the fact that you're probably now very late for your meeting. Okay. But um, thank you very much for the two of you for coming and sharing the data and as I'm and once again, and I also appreciate from the board, the very thoughtful questions that they had. Thank you.
My pleasure. And thank you for the questions and the comments. We definitely appreciate your feedback and it's great to see everyone here and those online as well.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we are gonna, we are gonna move to the high school.
Now that you were warmed up with the and this is really only one grade at the high school. This is our eleventh graders get to have SAT and ELA and in math and also NGSS in science.
We don't have a PSAT?
No, this is really strictly the state data. PSAT we do ourselves.
All right. So this first slide here is showing our ELA English Language Arts SAT scores, average scores two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-two. As you can see, in fifteen sixteen, we were slightly above the state by two points. We were always staying kind of in line with the state, six points below in in sixteen seventeen, two points below, and then we were two points above. So prior to COVID, those were where we were at. Two thousand nineteen, they did not take the twenty twenty year, they did not take the test. That average score is actually for the state of Connecticut for the the hybrid year. The SAT scores for each district were not public that year. And then in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, our scores dipped to four ninety-five. So we saw a big dip there as as did the state, we're six points below the state. The next slide. In math, prior to twenty twenty, again, pretty in line with the state. I think our our goal, especially with math passports and so forth, was was to get above the state and to improve the number of reaching benchmarks, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But as you can see there, we were slightly below the state in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Same thing in sixteen seventeen, we're six points below, two points below. And then in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we were two points above. So right in line with the state. Last year's test, the scores were fifty to four seventy-six.
It's interesting to see, though, that the SAT. Yeah, there are different numbers.
Yeah, we don't have the same numbers on our graphs.
Tom, do you know anything about that? We've got four ninety-five and five oh one.
If I believe, if I remember correctly, I believe we caught that this this slide.
Yeah, on your papers, that was the ELA scores again. So these are the actual scores. These are the math scores on the
Here, can I?
On the presentation.
Can you say that to us, please?
Yeah, yeah, we will.
Yeah, apologize for that error that we caught.
Well, yeah, these are the actual math scores. So you can go on to the next one. Okay, sorry.
We will get this, the corrected one to you guys.
I have a copy. We can just copy this one.
Good, Jack?
All right. So this is the next generation's science standards. And we just again assess our grade eleven students on the the science test. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we were just less than a point above the state. Two thousand twenty, twenty-one. We don't, we weren't given the Connecticut score, but we dipped to fifty-one point two. And then a slight rise in fifty-six point five, again, really matching what the the state performed on on that test. Move the next slide. And this is us, Language Arts in comparison with the other Alliance districts with Kelly slightly above us. And then same in math, we are second performance index for all the Alliance District Schools format. And then this is a breakdown similar to what Peter and Jamal showed with the different subgroups. And we can go back to that if there's questions later on. But we want to move on to the next slide. So our action plan, the biggest thing that I want to stress is, I feel like we had a pretty good action plan going forward before COVID. And so a lot of what I I would like to see us do is get back to some of the good things that we were doing. The first and foremost is we need to get back to celebrating growth as a school. One of our biggest goals this year, when we started the year, was to bring back Falcon pride. I think it was clearly lost big time over the last few years. And I feel like it's growing. I feel like we have a lot more involvement in extracurriculars and and there's more pride in the school. So with SATs, taking pride when they take the SAT. Where we want to celebrate as classes. So having each class look at their average score that they took in the fall compared to last fall. They'll look at those numbers and and look as a class, what was the growth that that happened? And then as individual students, each of our English teachers and our math teachers are going over the scores with each individual student and setting goals with those students. And that's just happened because last year was the first year that we went back to taking the PSAT. So we're finally starting to go back to tracking the data where the kids will actually take this test five times before they take the the real one in in their junior year.
Can I just say the format of the SAT changed on us too. It was online. And it has not been online ever before, but last year SATs. And we've just found out that PSATs we can also purchase online. So it does make sense, like we've done with the S-Back, that we really get them in the same format used to that same way, so that they're more comfortable with that. And I know that in the curriculum, we've built in PSAT, SAT type questions in our end unit assessments as well.
Yep, usually in the next bullet. But going back to pre-COVID, we we had common unit assessments. And part of, when we developed those common unit assessments, we make sure we embedded SAT type questions into those those assessments that we expect all our students to be taking. We have common grading procedures. So during PD and especially department collaboration time, teachers getting together to make sure that they're grading things consistently and making sure that that our students are experiencing the same things in each class that they have. If they're in an Algebra I class with with Mrs. Harvey, they're getting the same experience that Mrs. Kennedy is providing. We want to go back to addressing attendance concerns. Attendance over the past few years has has not been good at all. And we need to get back to addressing attendance when we see concerns. We're having meetings with with students that are showing patterns with attendance. We we will go back to our appeals process for credit appeals. If a student has more than twelve absences, they would have to appeal to earn that credit by, you know, providing the the reasons why. We are going back. The next one is Tom and Clint are are working to get all our historical data onto Power School so our our teachers can actually see it. In the past, we've really been taking everything and making our own Excel sheets to show growth. And, you know, not even really utilizing the S-Back scores and and having that align with with their SAT scores to see how how that that is. So getting those, that testing data on the Power School will be will be a huge improvement. And revisions to our intervention system with our, we have increased tutors now. We have set up intervention meetings where I'm working with two of our counselors. Adam's going to be working with two counselors and then Carmine will be working with two counselors. And where we, you know, that's our team. And I'm, I have A through C, basically, actually A through G. But those are my guys that that we're going to look at each of those individual kids. If there's, if they have concerns, we're gonna, we're gonna find the interventions that each of those individual kids have. And then support them in in different ways that we can by utilizing the the tutors during CTL, matching CTL teachers with the kids that are struggling in their classes, making calls home and so forth. And then and then really inviting them to Falcon Academy. I'm very proud. This year, I feel like is the first year that we've really seen Falcon Academy start jumping with the numbers. And a lot of it is thanks to Mark Ramano with his work. He's done a lot with our athletics and any kid that has a D R F is required by their coach to attend Falcon Academy to get the support they need. We're finding kids when we look at our, when we have our meetings with our counselors, we're identifying kids that would benefit from Falcon Academy and talking to the families. We can't force them to go to Falcon Academy, but with with the encouragement of of the families, we're getting more people going to Falcon Academy. And we're growing that with the teachers that that are there to support them. We now have a section for math support, section for reading and social studies support, a section for world language support. So that the kids can get the help that they need when they're going for for that. Things that we really need, this is, this is a big one, is creating incentives. For a lot of our kids, either they're going to a college that no longer requires SAT scores or they're not planning on going to college. And a lot of them, to be honest with you, did not take the the test the last couple of years seriously. So we need to build incentive as to why they're taking the test. Part of that's going to be with with Falcon pride. But also part of it is, we have to get creative in in, you know, rewarding the kids that reach benchmark or rewarding the kids if they show growth and rewarding the kids if they attempt the test. So we've talked about creative ways. We haven't decided on what we're going to do. We've talked about raffles. We've talked about potential in the past with CAPT. When that didn't really have any, you know, basis after after high school, we gave the incentive of getting an exam exemption. So do we look in that route? Or, I mean, potentially, we've even talked about like maybe and maybe cell phone in CTL time if they if they got to a certain level on the, we have to get creative because but we have to get creative in figuring out how we can get them to do well and try their very best. We need to find, get creative in in opportunities for department collaboration time. Prior to COVID, we we did release on Tuesdays for our departments to get together and to form their data team. Prior to COVID, we, we did release that on Tuesdays, uh, for our departments to get together and to form their data teams. Review the unit assessment that they were gonna give, um, do teacher-to-teacher PD, do a lot of those things. Now we have to figure out where to embed that, that time back in. So we, we, we have to get a little bit more creative on how we're gonna do that because we've lost a little bit of time that they used to have to ensure, um, these common experiences and so forth. Uh, for the universal screener, for SRBI, right now, we do have Lexia Rapid for reading. But we, as, just like Jamal stated before, we don't really have a, a screener for math. Um, so what are we using for this? We're using the unit tests, we're using the grades, alright? We're pulling the grades to see which kids have the Ds and Fs. But a universal screener for both math and reading is very important. And it's something that, uh, that we're exploring right now to see if we can find one that would fit Fitch High School. And then the last action on here that, that I have is really just reprioritizing SAT as an area of focus. Alright, these past years, we have not focused on, on the kids doing their, you know, doing the best we can as a school on SAT, our focus has been social emotional, um, well-being. And I think right now that still needs to be an area of our focus. Um, I think as we, we build that and we build pride, uh, in themselves and in our school, that'll, that'll show an increase in our SAT scores again. But prior to, uh, prior to two thousand twenty, we were focused on, on improving our SAT scores, and I think we were making some gains. I'd like to get back to some of the things that we were doing before that. I, I take a lot of pride in, in, you know, in showing growth, and this is, I'm a numbers guy, so I like to look at, at the data. And it, it, it really, it hurt me to see that these results. But I want to get back to, to where we were, I think there's one more slide. Oh, actually, two more slides, sorry. So these are specific to math and English. In mathematics, uh, we talked about, uh, we do have common unit assessments that all, all the, uh, you know, data teams give. Uh, and there is that PSAT portion. Our teachers do set benchmarks with their students, so where they, you know, what's, what's the goal when they take it their next time? Uh, we, we monitor their scores, we share this, uh, the, the data with the students, and we set those goals. Um, on the eighth of, of November, during that PD in the afternoon, the mathematics is gonna be looking at their question item analysis to see what type of questions we're doing well with, which questions, uh, as a school, we don't do as well as compared to the state and so forth. And, and, uh, how, how we can make adjustments to curriculum and instruction, um, to improve those types of questions. Science department is gonna analyze, uh, not, not last year's, we're gonna wait for our results from the PSAT that they took in October. But they're going to analyze the, their science strand questions on the SAT. So they're gonna look specifically at their questions and do the same thing. Uh, they're gonna do it as data teams, so ninth grade science teachers will look at the ninth grade results from the PSAT nine. Tenth graders will do their, theirs with the PSAT ten and so forth. Um, and then we, we are utilizing our tutors to, uh, assist us with intervention courses. We do have math teachers teaching the intervention courses. But we also now have the opportunity to get tutors in there to, to help out or to pull kids to, to work with them. And, you know, just providing an opportunity for them to work with kids during CTL. Uh, in English, it's been an effort of Ms. McKenna to, uh, make sure that in every single English classroom, every single uh, day that they have class, there's time, silent, sustained reading that's going on in those classes to really boost their stamina, especially for assessments like the SAT. And I can tell you, uh, I think we can tell you that it is going on when I'm going into English classrooms, I'm seeing it. Um, and every English class I, I go into at different times, uh, during, during the blocks, I've, I've seen that happening. They are also gonna commit to a question analysis, they're gonna wait till the PSAT results from October come back, which should be soon. Uh, and do the same thing by, uh, grade level data teams. Social studies is gonna commit to, uh, looking at their content area of questions. They will at least have one common form of assessment, uh, that's gonna be SAT-based, that they will give uh, late January, early February to kind of give a basis as to, uh, priorities leading our juniors up to their, their SAT test. Um, and utilizing, uh, Stephanie Heaton is our, and Alyssa McLean are our reading specialists. And, and they, they are amazing, um, educators. And, uh, we're using them to support students and they're supporting, they're, they're helping teachers, uh, learn how to teach reading. Not every English teacher, uh, you know, has the skills. Uh, and they're providing a lot of, a lot of tools for those, those teachers, um, to improve reading at the grade level.
And the high school has a group called Disrupt Text, which really were teachers, college staff developers coming in, and also NUA, National Urban League, you know, leaders. And so they've been meeting with teachers, helping the English department really hone in on some of these skills and make sure that it's very inclusive and that all of our kids sitting before us, you know, have access to the program.
They, they're, they're amazing, they, they're actually working with our, our English department again tomorrow. Uh, they did some work in August and really, yeah, cul-cultry relevant, make sure that everybody's represented in the text that they're, they're reading. And, you know, not throwing out the text that we used to use, but, but putting a, a different spin on a lot of the text to connect it to everybody that's in their audience, um, in their classroom. And then there's, uh, one more slide. And this speaks more to the PSAT, Liz, that you were talking about before. Was, you know, now what, what goals, uh, can we make? Uh, if you look at this data, the top one is our class of twenty twenty-four. These are our, uh, juniors this year that will be, um, taking the actual SAT, uh, in a couple of months. Their, their average score is actually nicely above, uh, the state, four fifty-seven versus four forty-three. Benchmark, benchmark for mathematics means that, uh, those are the, the percentage of kids that if they were to take a college-level math course, the likelihood, they, they would be highly likely to get a C-plus or, or above in that college-level math course. Obviously thirty-four percent is not where we want to be, this is, this is an area that we've, back in two thousand sixteen, we were hovering at thirty-one, thirty-two percent. And it was an area of charge that we wanted to, to improve. And, uh, really, we set the goal of forty percent, um, for that two thousand nineteen year, which we actually reached forty-one point two in two thousand nineteen. So we were making gains, so I think if, with the push, we could, you know, it's gonna be, uh, uh, I'd like to drive that, that number back up to around forty percent reaching benchmark. In English reading, writing, um, the average score was four seventy-eight compared to the state of four fifty-seven. So we have seventy-one percent reaching benchmark, um, versus fifty-nine percent in the state. I do want to say, we, we, we had a hundred and eighty-seven students take the test. We have about two hundred and twenty in that class, so we did have a, a decent percentage of kids that did not come in for that SA, that PSAT last year. This was back from last year's data. I do think that five hundred is a lofty goal, um, for math and five twenty for, for English. But I think, um, that it's, it's definitely a goal that we can strive to, to achieve. Um, and that would kind of get us back to where we were two thousand nineteen, um, prior to, to COVID. Um, the class of twenty twenty-five, below that, we have some work to do. You know, their average score right now, when they took the test as freshmen, uh, these are our current sophomores, so this was last year's data in October. They had an average score of four oh-seven, which is ten points below the, the state. You guys can see the numbers there. And then in English reading, writing, they were four twenty-three compared to the state, which is four twenty-seven. So, uh, you know, our, our goal is to get them to, to similar, uh, standards, but it'll be more of a challenge. But they'll have an extra year without COVID and all those demands, I'm hoping to, um, with, with our goals in mind, with our, our strategies to improve those scores.
When we get those PSAT data back for this year, it'll be interesting to lay that out on the charts so the board could see.
That's what, and that's what I, you know, back prior to, to two thousand twenty, we did that. We, we would keep the cohort analysis of the data, um, with each kid. We, we would see how they grew throughout the whole time, and we would look at the averages, um, for each, uh, as, as, as the grades went, you know, from freshman, sophomore, junior year, and we could see the growth. And, and I can say that we usually at least got twenty, twenty-five percent to thirty percent increase each, each year as they, they went through. So I want to get back to that, please, as soon as possible.
So we don't know how many soph, um, freshmen last year took the test, is that correct?
I could look at, I don't know why I didn't put it on there, but, uh, I, it was maybe I did add it after. Two forty-two, I wrote it in pencil.
That doesn't help me. How big was that class?
I think that class is, was, was bigger, I, it was like, I think, close to three hundred, so
Yeah.
We had a lot of kids not take, you know, they did not come in last year, uh, during that October test. So again, a, a, a big thing, like we talked about, is incentive and, and prioritizing and making them realize the importance of taking the test and doing well for their school, uh, for themselves. And, you know, opening up any option for them, because they, you know, you, you never know what, what you're gonna do just because one school may not require them as, as part of it, or they're not planning on, on going to college. Um, it's an important test, and we gotta make sure that they realize they give it their very best. And I don't think that was really happening in the last few years.
I'm gonna recognize Liz.
Um, Matt and Ted, I'm looking at the slide before this. Let me flip there, the mathematics, you said at the bottom of there is utilizing tutors to assist in intervention support. Do not have a math specialist.
We don't, we have, uh, we, our vision is to have a math specialist. We, there was a, uh, when Russ Stewart retired, he didn't fill that, that math teaching position. So we have a reading specialist for, for reading, we either, we have to get creative on how we're, we're going to create that math specialist, because right now, um...
So, uh, my understanding that the, the department went down in number, the number of teachers available, and therefore there's no specialists available to teach SAT math? Is that what I'm?
We have a, we have a math teacher teaching the SAT math, but that, you know, it's not, we don't have anyone identified as a math specialist right now. So either we gotta get creative in how we figure out who's covering what, and then that math specialist is teaching certain, certain...
Well, that was my other question, my follow-up question is, how do you see the utilization of, of a math specialist? How would that help improve?
I think
Because I'm looking at those scores, the math scores, I mean...
Yep.
It would really, it, right now, for example, in English language arts, we have a reading specialist where it's not something that's supporting content, it's supporting, uh, issues with the, the children's skills in a, in a particular area. So we identify through the Lexia Rapid or other assessments that the student is lacking certain skills, and we're working on those skills within the intervention. What we want to do is build that more up into, we have, we have that in the math, but we want to build it with specific math specialists, where if we identify skills that the students are lacking, then they can go in and do some math intervention, uh, work instead of, uh, it's not so, so much like, this is what you're struggling with in your algebra class. It's, these are some of the skills that you need to build on in order to do better in all of your math classes going forward. So that's what we need to build up in terms of our math.
And I'd like to see the model that we have, K, is the model that I'd like to see them have. Where the math, where the literacy specialist, certainly a literacy specialist has to have, uh, a high-level education certification. In the math, we've also hired very expert master teachers who get a lot of extra professional development. So they are part coach, part interventionist, part enrichment specialist. So that's the K E model that I'd like to see happen at the high school. But I don't think that we have that same level of, um, I mean, we could have that expertise. But right now, I guess the level of expertise is in the, um, you know, in our coordinators who are really looking at six through twelve and working with the whole staff. You know, those are probably our experts in those areas of STEM and...
I'm just trying to, so we have, you said Alyssa and Stephanie are, is it Stephanie?
Well, yeah, Stephanie is really the reading specialist. Alyssa, uh, is taking on that role because she ended up getting the degree, and she's able to help more of our kids in that capacity. But Stephanie is really our reading specialist. Uh, Alyssa is teaching a, you know, she's teaching a regular schedule. Uh, and Stephanie has, you know, some intervention, reading, reading intervention classes and so forth. But she also has time available in her schedule where she can push into classes. She can, you know, assist, uh, other teachers with, for certain group of students, or she can pull students out to work with them, um, as need be, so, um...
And, and that's your vision to see it?
I would like to see, to have one, and kind of exactly what, what Susan was saying with the, with that coach, that, you know, the, the lead teacher, but someone that's in our building every day. You know, Caitlin is amazing, but she's six through twelve, plus she's teaching, so
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be something that we'll have to talk about at budget time.
That's why I brought it up.
I appreciate that.
It's very important, Chris, that, you know, to us.
And a, a big, you know, we, we do want to keep our, you know, our math numbers. Uh, when we decided to go away from basic, we, we promised that we were gonna keep those numbers low. So, you know, the, the class sizes, um, to, to support the, the kids that, as they're, they're going through a college prep course, make sure that, that the teachers can, can work with all the kids, so.
Yep.
I'm gonna recognize Dean.
Thanks. For no particular order, but generally speaking, it's about how we're viewing the data. If the scores were reported, that would be one thing, but the scores are reported with a bar chart. And a couple of things, bars are shown starting from zero, and our top line is six hundred. I think most of us, or all of us, know that the SAT scored from two hundred to eight hundred. It would make the pictures, since the bars are intended to give a visual representation of the number. In that sense, this is inaccurate, they should start from the two hundred and show you where the eight hundred is. So you can, to be honest, it would look a little more dismal than this chart does. So I'm disregarding the visual, I, I appreciate that we do bar charts for all sorts of things, but I know it wasn't intentional, but, um, the other thing I'd like to see is, the numbers are meaningless in and of themselves. And I know when I got on my SAT, my kids blow me away, and I hope it's all different errors and stuff. But if you've seen reports recently, you, you, you see scores reported back as, here's your score, and here's where you are. Which, which percentile are you in? Because you can imagine, kids that score eight hundred, um, on the ELA or the math portion are the exceptional kids. I don't know whether it's a typical normal curve, you know, the, um, but, you know, so I would like to know, for example, if our kids' scores, say, combined, let's say the average is a thousand, well, what percentile does it put them in? Is that like, in the healthy center, I might look at that, it's cheaper, well, perfect score is sixteen hundred, so a thousand, that's, that's so far short. And maybe it is, but where are they in, in the curve?
So this is not a percentage, is that performance index? So Tom, can you speak to how that aligns?
But these are the scores, though.
Yes.
These have to be the scores, they're not a performance index. I, I, when I see five oh-seven, I take that, literally, five oh-seven. So, so there's that, I do want to create to see where we are in terms of the, the percentile.
I think we could find that pretty, you know, kind of on a Google search.
And that's, and that's, that moves, you know, it changes every year. Yep, the, the third thing I wanted to point out, and it's been touched on already, but it's, it, it also is connected to what you said about providing incentives. At least when I took it, I hate to be self-referential all the time, and I know that's possible. But when I took it, my kids have taken, other kids I know that have taken it, they're college-bound, the only reason to be taking the SAT is to try to get a good score to get into a school. And so, that was the incentive. Now, whether that changed your performance is another matter. Changing your desire, translating your desire to actual performance, we all know, is, is a tricky area. So, but if we're trying to encourage kids to take the SAT by incentive, other than, hey, you gotta get into a good school, why would kids who are not even gonna go to college, taking the SAT, therefore possibly, because they have no real incentive? Other than it costs them money to take it, and maybe not even then, if the school pays the fee or pay that fee, they take it and likely they would depress the, the overall score. All they really care about is the kids who want to go to school, need to take the SAT, are taking it, and how do they feel? For everybody else, they're doing something else. I'm not interested in their SAT scores, because that's very much apples and oranges, they couldn't care less. I've, I've got, I'm making a broad civilization, other than personal satisfaction, why would I bother doing that? Yeah, and I have a fifth one, I have a fourth one, but I can't take it at the moment. It, 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 uncomfortable. The uncomfortable silence.
William.
So, really, the data is, it's not, I'm not really concerned about the data, because right now, a lot of top students aren't even taking the test. Many of the top colleges say, if you're not getting a fifteen hundred, don't even submit. You know, even pre-COVID, many schools said, you don't need to take the SATs. So what I'm really worried about is, what I think you're, you're both worried about is, is the incentive program and how to tie that into other things to make students want to take it. You know, many, many kids weren't, you know, going with tutors and things like that, they weren't really taking the test. My son took it once, and that was it. And so it'd be interesting to find out, because I, I know there are many And so it'd be interesting to find out because I, I know there are many schools that do it, you know, it's not required in many schools nationally, but some schools tied into their scholarship programs. And knowing what their scholarship program, so like if you're gonna go to UVM, if you have a 1250 or above, you're gonna get a $17,000 scholarship automatically. Quinnipiac has a very similar thing. And so getting that data might be very helpful for incentivizing taking the test and making it worth it. Even partnering with our community scholarship programs that we have throughout Groton and the New London County, saying, listen, we really wanna work on our SATs. Can we somehow tie that into these scholarships? And again, recognizing that your SAT score has to be based on, you know, what are the, what are the local and national averages? Based on, you know, whatever the demographics are, socioeconomic, race, things like that. But that would be, I, I, as soon as they were, I read this yesterday, the biggest thing, I wrote down biggest challenges. It's incentive, you know, giving validity back to the SAT because right now the SAT is, you know.
And the interesting thing was the state of Connecticut chose the SAT because they thought that was the incentive, that was what colleges were looking for when we're getting kids college and career ready. So they, they kind of, instead of making up another test, they thought, why don't we just use the SAT? It is a common assessment, you know, at that grade level. And we've got a lot of years of statistics around, you know, that assessment, so.
Dean, before I recognize, I wanna make sure that there's someone who hasn't spoken, Beverly or Jay? All right, Dean.
I know the formulation of questions on the SAT have changed over the years. And at least again, when I took it and probably remained the same for a long time, I think it's changed somewhat. And there were tricks. Now, why would there be tricks? Why don't you just, if you wanted to ask me about how much algebra I know, just ask me algebra questions, but you don't. The questions are framed differently. And again, at least when I took it, if you got the answer wrong, this is a strategy, you got a quarter point off. You know, so you have to, you couldn't guess, right? Okay, now, the reason for, the ostensible reason for the trickiness of the SAT and why SAT required more than your typical test strategy prep was because it was designed originally to make sure, it's a screening device, to make sure that the kid did well enough on the SAT, the, their chances of success, successfully completing a college course. The whole four years was heightened. Colleges wanted to make sure that when they admitted kids, that the kid would probably be able to hang in there academically. So it was a screener. And there's all kinds of data, people can question it, but there has been data over the years that correlate, you know, SAT scores with performance, finishing in four years, doing well, getting above the average, et cetera. That's what the SAT was for, so that's why I think of using it as an assessment system. Connecticut using it as an assessment is, is inappropriate because it is not, I don't think, I've never taken yes back, for example. It is not like a major league yes back versus a minor league yes back. It's typical less back, it's a different animal altogether, at least it was when I took it.
Okay, so I just wanna relay it back to Groton. And so Dean, I do hear your concerns in terms of, is it, is it the best assessment? It is the assessment that we have? And so I may, I would be anxious to hear about how the high school has come together to incentivize people to take the SAT and to do the best that they can as a way of celebrating themselves and celebrating their growth. My other caution is about tying SAT scores to scholarships is that there are people who are like me that can't take standardized testing and my standardized score put me down to a doormat level of functioning when in fact I know I'm above a doormat. Maybe not much, but I am above that. And so I think we have to be careful about those correlations, but on.
Can I just make one comment regarding to, I think that, uh, one of the things you were talking about is kind of preparing to take that test. I think Matt's worked really hard before my time here and, and now as well to make sure that we're incorporating SAT type questions into assessments and I think you talked about that. So it's not just like we just take a little time to practice it, but as kids are practicing it around their, their high school career. And I think that our, our preliminary discussions about these incentives, you know, we're thinking about, you know, those, some, some students are just gonna say, okay, I'm gonna get into a raffle and, you know, that's great, that'll help me, you know. But also we wanna talk to students and say, you know, this is about you and how you can improve and how, and showing how you've improved over your high school career. And so you start this thing all the way in the ninth grade, taking that PSAT eight, nine and building off of that. And how did you do in the 10th grade? How'd you do on the PSAT in the 11th grade? And then culminate it with this test and showing improvement. And that's, and, and talking to our students about, you know, it's about you and, and your improvement and seeing how you're doing. So, and we know that some students are gonna benefit from that as well. So it's something where, as, as Matt really said, re-prioritizing the SAT, continuing to have those, those SAT questions. And even just talking to the kids about, you know, this is how you did. Some kids don't even know how they did. Um, and so to have that individual conversation and saying, this is how you did. Okay, let's see if we can get a few points higher here on this next test and here's the things we're gonna do to support you. Those are the conversations we're starting to have again. And I think Matt's done a great job of really prioritizing those conversations within the department. So I think that's gonna be a big step for us.
I, I'm excited to hear about that. I'm excited to hear like we're finally getting back into, getting back into community, getting back into the schools and getting back to our kids. Andrea.
I did, Matt, I had a question for you. I thought that I heard you say that one of the incentives could be that you validate a test. Is that what I heard?
We, uh, when they, they used to take the cap their sophomore year and they would get a capped exemption and not, which they could use the following year for their midterm test where they would.
You're not talking about validating, of course.
No.
I'm really interested in that because I know that at the academy, if you do really well in a course, you're, you validate final. And I, I think that would be a really good incentive, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you guys for coming out and actually sort of being the guinea pigs for us to present our, the data for the schools since before COVID. So, um, I think that I really appreciate you guys willing to kind of like stay with us until 20 of eight on, and to present, to present. Like you can take it from my salary. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, um, board, I am looking at the time, though we are not, um, we are not to end at eight. That is not my point and nor do I want to stop any conversation or any discussion. I am going to ask that the assistant superintendent save his teacher value, uh, evaluation report until, um, next, uh, next meeting, which would be November.
I'm just gonna do that in the COW.
And we could actually do that at the COW. And then my understanding from Susan Austin and from Andrea, that if we go to new business section, uh, number one, the challenging curriculum for middle years at first reading, we are going to, um, table that for the next. Is that okay? Did I read your language correctly? Um, and that we do need to vote on the Board of Education meeting schedule. I hope people have looked at that, um, because I know that that might not be necessarily true where some of our subcommittees meet. And so I, we might need to take a look at that for maybe a special meeting. And we are also, um, are going to need to be talking about our preferred class size guidelines so that, um, Susan and her staff can put together a budget that makes sense.
And I've gotta communicate to the public.
And then we have to communicate for the public. So two, three and four of the new business is gonna need to be done, but let's see if we can march on. Um, do I have any complaints about, uh, tabling those, um, items?
Um, no, I don't have a complaint, but I have a suggestion. The next time that we talk about data and there's gonna be a lot of conversation, you might wanna think about having it at a committee of the whole meeting and not at a regular board meeting.
Beverly, I absolutely agree with you. The reason why we did this first one is that very soon where all of our meetings are gonna be in budget stuff and we're not gonna hit the data again until later, like, like really sort of like in the February, March of next year. So I wanted to see if we could get as much done. I do know that this was not the most timely time to do it. I'm just wanting to make sure that we get the data because that's what we requested as the board.
Planning on the, um, one of the November COWs to have elementary come in, is that right? Dr. Lisa, elementary will be coming in to do.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna be moving on to the business manager report.
So on, um, attachment number two, this is our object code summary through, um, last week, Thursday, showing that we have a projected unexpendant balance of $35,501. A similar story as we, as we told last, uh, last, uh, meeting where we are over budget in our fuel, our heating fuel and our diesel and buses expenses, uh, under budget in salaries and, um, out of district, uh, special education tuition.
Do I have any questions about the object code?
I have a question.
Absolutely, Beverly.
Um, Ken, how do you see us with the heating and diesel oil for the year? Do, do you have a projection that we're gonna be over like $500,000 or anything like that? The way things are going now?
Yeah, we, we had locked in at a price about a month ago, which is less than what it's currently at. So, uh, that's, that's in this object code summary, um, uh, I think for each of those categories. Let's see. Are you sure? Here under electric stuff. Sorry. I can't, I can't really see because underneath this. So for diesel, uh, I anticipate we're gonna be over, uh, over budget by 121,000. And for heating oil, over budget by 161,000. But that should be the extent of it because we did lock in where, where we're somewhat protective. As long as we don't, uh, use more than what was at this.
But that's, that's been taken account of with that 36,000.
Correct.
So we've taken that into consideration.
Uh, but the budget for next year, that, that's a whole nother story.
Okay, thank you.
Beverly, nice ques- good question. Any other questions about the object code? If not, and would you be willing to move us to?
I am with you now for attachment number three, which is our health insurance, um, claims report. Uh, so for the month of August, the latest report that we have, uh, we are under budget or under anticipated claims amount by 255,000. That, uh, so it's, it's, it's typical for this plan to be under, uh, the anticipated number for the beginning part of the year as folks use their, uh, their own deductible. Uh, and then at the, at the end of the year, it kind of flips around. So I think we're, we're, we're in a, uh, this is how, how we would anticipate it to come out. I did look at the prior year, we're a little bit ahead of prior year. Last year we were at eighty-three percent on a year-to-date basis. So we are trending a little bit better at, at this point, but, um, only time will tell.
Questions about the insurance? All right, hearing now, we are going to move on. Hello, Mr. Kilpatrick.
Good evening.
How are you?
Terrific, you?
I am doing dandy, it's good to see your face.
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna report on four items tonight. And the first one is that I am presently, we are presently working with, uh, Resource Lighting and Energy, which is providing us a free audit of our HBAC and light systems, uh, in the district. And we are starting with, we're focusing right now on the Fitch High School vintage area and the Charles Barnum School, uh, because we will have an opportunity to, uh, submit, uh, apply for a grant, for a state grant on, uh, HBAC. So, uh, we're working on, I started that today and hope to have that ready for that grant submission later in the month. Uh, the second item, um, but we are also meeting, we're meeting with the architects, Amy Samuelson, who was the architect of the middle schools. She is with the SLAM Cooperative and she is working on the fieldhouse locker room study for Fitch High School. We're meeting with her, Mark Romano and Rich Costa on Thursday morning to go over the latest on that. So hopefully by our next meeting, I'll have some more updates on where we stand with that study.
Do you mean that that would, like, include, like, what they're saying it's gonna cost?
Well, they've already given, uh.
They've already given the cost.
They've given us estimates of what, what the two proposals would, but, uh, we're gonna meet and see if there's any, any later information regarding those, uh, that study. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, can I just interject because instead of just doing in my communications is that, um, the, the board had requested for me to reach out to people, um, regarding about the, specifically about the fieldhouse and the concession stand, where it is in terms of the field project. Um, and I was able to meet with, um, Mayor Melendez and Moderator Rusk, um, last week. And, um, it is, and I, and I've already talked to Susan, is that we wanted to kind of get together with, um, John and, and Juan and talk about the field study and to see what, what needs to have happened with the field house. So I think that your meeting is gonna be, um, essential to help us, um, help the field study understand what's going on.
Be fruitful and we'll be able to provide more information when we get together with, with the other group.
That'd be great, thank you.
Uh, my third item is, um, we did meet with the, uh, regarding the robotics team moving into Mary Morrison School. We did meet with the fire marshal, fire chief, uh, captain from the fire department, some board members of the robotics, uh, club, uh, and Sherry Fakers, who is now the.
Coach.
She's the coach now, she's, she's the, uh, Board of Ed representative to that group. So we met last Friday. We had some disappointing news from the fire marshal. He's not going to allow that group to move in. As it is now constituted, we may have to make some, and we are working on looking at some other arrangements for, uh, the shop work that takes place. They, they typically had a metal shop where they do a lot of metal work, which includes oils and some other, uh, metal shavings, those things which, uh, are considered a fire hazard. So we're concerned about that. And of course, uh, they've had a wood shop previously and of course, Mary Morrison School wasn't built to be that. So he's concerned about that too. So we're looking at some other alternatives as to where we can put those, uh, shops if it's going to be at Mary Morrison. We're also looking at other alternatives for space within the district, yes. So as soon as I have some update on it, I'll, 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 uh, report back to you on that. And then the last item, I see there's one more on the back of my, I know, dear, um, which is a very important item. Uh, because on November 8th, uh, there is going to be a, an election. Uh, and we suspect that there will be lots of people going to the polls on that day, even though it's a midterm. And, uh, we just spoke to our, um, central office, uh, committee this, uh, this afternoon and, uh, asked that when we're planning all of these, uh, events that'll be taking place on that day, uh, TLI day, that we keep in mind that we need to leave lots of parking spaces for the public that'll be coming to, of those schools. And the schools that we will have voting on, uh, in this year will be Fitch High School, Mary Morrison again, Thames and Mystic River Schools. And again, here in this, uh, central office, right here in this very room. So, uh, we're working on that. We do assist the, while it's the registrar's responsibility, uh, to, uh, uh, make the polls accessible, everybody. We do assist the, we do assist, uh, the registrars by, uh, erecting some signs that they ask us to put up and, and of course making, uh, the entire area accessible to the public to get in.
So I'll be bringing that up at our next principals meeting and work with Phil and Paula around the schedule of events because November 8th is our biggest, is, you know, our biggest event. The, both the mark, the November and the March as regional shooting day. So, um, we'll have to look at where everybody's going.
Together to make sure that there's not a lot of crisscrossing.
Should make sure that we get notices for it.
Yeah, Paula's putting together the plan and we'll send it out. Yeah.
Any questions for Sam? All right, we're moving on. So on committee reports, policy.
I watched the policy meeting twice today, I'm sure that we have everything in order. And we're ready to go with the eligibility for high school athletics. And for the name of the facilities and the English, I'm sorry, enrollment in high school advanced programs. And we think that we have addressed all of the concerns of the board there, so we'll see.
Okay. All right, curriculum.
We did not meet this past month, though we planned to, we're in the makeup meeting this Wednesday. Didn't know that there was a concert. And so we were gonna make sure that we're out by quarter six. So we'll be meeting in Phil's office at five to quarter six. So that we can be in person, right? But we will have, if anybody wants to. Phil, it's gonna be, get you to put it up on your screen there if you can, if there's a call in for anybody who wants to call in.
Oh, I'll create a Zoom.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right. So look forward to hearing last.
Yeah, we've got curriculum that needs, that's going to be what we're gonna have to vote on. So.
Okay.
That's been brought to us this time, that's why we're making, making sure that we can go.
Oh, oh, super, so then it'll go to the committee as a whole and then we can vote on it?
Exactly.
Perfect, perfect. All right, finance and facilities, Mr. Jay.
Yes, good evening. So we met on October eighteenth. We discussed an item we'll be covering tonight with regard to the cost of reduced meals at three of the schools. We reviewed the mentor director stipend and job description. We reviewed Treehouse tuition and the financial update at Treehouse. We reviewed the culinary arts architectural plan and got the timeline for that coming back. We discussed the fieldhouse study. Field lights at Grotten Middle School and received an update on the solar panel project. I'll give you a hint, that's still in legal review.
We were done with that.
No.
Any day now.
Any day now. And communications.
Well, we met twice this past month, on the twelfth, we met to try to welcome William to the committee. And shared with him the twenty-three topics that had been raised over the course of meetings earlier this year. And we entered that meeting with that list of topics. And asked people if they would rank order them in terms of they, which they thought would be important, both in terms of internal and external communication. We met again this afternoon, that was our. Regular special meeting of the month. And. We had a very good discussion on the, the rankings. Subject to our follow-up appears as if we may be focusing on several areas. Updating the 2016 communication plan and coming up with some pretty clear goals and strategies and tactics. Second would be reassess our communication platforms, our internal platforms to harmonize the ease of accessibility for. That all schools could use some of the same, same applications and for the external communications to families so they'd be. More easily be able to navigate the various websites and Facebook pages. The third area, we talked about outreach to the community. There are no specific, specific decisions, but some of the areas we're looking at are supporting the PTOs if they want it. Some sort of outreach in the terms of maybe forums, maybe focus groups, maybe community presence, board member community presence. Board member presence in community activities. And discussion of future strategies to reach the public, that's more than enough for now. Did I miss anything?
No, you got it all.
We did talk about the liaison group and getting that up and out of the gap.
Yes, ma'am.
Town council, city council. So, so, and to answer that, because it's already on, I might as well answer that, is actually. Juliet Parker and I are working on getting that together and coming up with this format and structure. So that we can do it, Juliet and I just have not, um, and you are. Well, the committee brought to my attention that to tell the board, you know, the story of a budget process. It might be good to be able to lay out some of our thinking even to that group. As we start thinking about it.
And I think that we were thinking about, we were thinking about thinking. On a fort, a quarterly liaison meeting, I said it during a monthly. That's, so I think that that's what we were looking at, so that is going in. I'm gonna move us along, negotiations, we're just waiting to hear back from the administration union, but we have started. But we have come to our conclusion to that and we're just waiting for their union vote. Rita has sent me something, I will just make sure that it gets to Joan. Um, and then Joan can put it in the meeting and it's about her. Talking about with Learn, it was actually kind of lengthy, so I'll let her do that. Um, and I don't know when we're doing an AGSA Board of Ed liaison, we have not had one.
I'll have to check with Joyce to see if she's got it on the calendar.
Grotten Scholarship.
Yep, we just met last week. There is, we're trying to decide new strategies of having to increase our offerings this year. The budget is, is quite tight and we want to be able to, and to expand and to include. So if anybody has any ideas about whom we can contact, send letters out to. I have not received the list yet of who the current donors are. I have asked if, and Susan, I'm gonna ask you, is there an alumni? I, I contacted the alumni person on Facebook, but I haven't reheard, received anything back. But is there anybody else, could you get me a name of the alumni coordinator, maybe if there's an alumni association?
Cause. I'll check with the high school.
That would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Cause NFA does this, they blanket their, all their alumni and it was like, well, I'm a Fitch alum and I never received a letter. So you know, it's an untapped resource, but if you think of anybody, please send it to me. You know, and with an address, I think, you know, we could send letters out, we're gonna get, the letters are gonna start going out. In November for to ask for donations.
Julie Cagle just ran her class reunion. And I think it was the fiftieth year and they visited our schools and were so impressed as part of their celebration. And so that, that would be a really good group and she wants to do that again. She thought that was such a great idea for them to see the school.
How did the auction do?
GEF, I think it.
Foundation.
I don't know.
Okay.
That wasn't even brought up, GEF, that's not part of this.
Sorry, you're right, I spoke too soon.
That's okay, sorry. I'm like, GEF, no, that's a different group.
Okay. Athletic fields.
Yes, I know I sound like a broken record, that the task force is not meeting until a decision is made about the Claude Chester property.
But is it not meeting tonight or tomorrow, isn't it on Park and Recs?
I believe the Park and, the Park and Rec. Committee is meeting, but not the Athletic Fields Task Force.
Right, but I believe that they are getting an update of the task force.
Well, since the task force hasn't met, I don't know what that update would be, but the task force has not met.
Okay. Trails.
The trails committee met in September of the cop, the cop family park area. Parks and Recs was approached by the Southeast Connecticut Foundation of the Blind, who want to put in a Braille trail. That is not a done deal, but if it comes to fruition, they will be looking for volunteers. To help build the trail, that may be a great activity for some of their upper-class students.
Sounds like an Eagle Scout thing.
I was just saying.
Yeah.
It can be both. And.
Library.
Library, one card is underway. The ninth, the ninth grade is pretty well blanketed. Tenth grade, there's some technical issues which they're working through. Eleventh and twelfth, they hope by the end of the year. And elementary and middle school is aspirationally, maybe we can accelerate it, but probably next year.
Okay, wow, that's actually gonna happen.
Wish they had started with eleventh and twelfth.
Yeah. And then, the military children, was that last?
We did that last week or last month and we'll be in spring.
Okay. All right, I'm moving us on to the action items, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. With points of clarification will be allowed. I will accept a motion for the consent agenda.
Will be consented.
Can I have a second? Can I have, can I have, the second is through Matthew, any discussion?
I just have some corrections to the minute, but I'll just see.
That'd be great. Okay.
It's just typos, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, none, all those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. We would like to say thank you to Elizabeth Porter. Has. What?
I should say Patrick Porter.
Patrick Porter, who has donated a Cel- a Celestron Power Seeker one twenty-seven EQ telescope valued at two hundred and fifty dollars. For use by the school district, we say thank you to both Liz and Pat for that. I am now, William, if you would be willing to read the motion for old business number one, just the motion, please.
Discussion and possible action, Ari, a second reading of policy. P six one four five dot one eligibility to participate in interscholastic high school athletics.
Okay, so the motion would be to approve policy P six one four five dot one eligibility to participate. In interscholastic high school athletics as a second reading. Can I have a second, please? I have a second by Liz, discussion, please. And I don't know, it's Susan and Andrea if you wanna, and I know Beverly, you're also part of the policy. Is there anything that, this is the second reading?
Just to, to say that Mark Romano and high school people are still a gentleman. And I think that the language is now where we're, we're expected to be.
If anything, yeah. Just that the board worked really hard with this and, and Mark came to the table a few times so that we could really get it the way we need to get it. And you heard them say tonight that that process that he's created, they're even using for all of our kids. So really pay close attention to how the children are doing before they get an F on the report.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of policy P six one four five dot one eligibility to participate. In interscholastic high school activities.
Athletics.
Thank, thank you, athletics, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Dean, would you please read the motion for number two?
I move to approve policy P seven five five one, naming facilities as a second reading.
Can I have a second to that, please?
Second.
William has seconded that, can I have discussion?
Discussions. I pointed out to Andrea, there was a typographical error in the back. Where community members under number one. Is, is duplicated. So it says shall appoint the school naming community, opposed of community members, parents, board members, community members. See how it is, I just wanted to point that out.
I'll get Eric to fix that, thank you.
And that's, that's on the regulation and we're not, we'll see.
Oh, yeah, right, but I, I thank you for finding that. Sometimes you look at it till you cross eyes and don't even see it.
Any other discussion on that?
Once again, I think we get everything that everybody.
Awesome. All those in favor of the second reading of the policy P seven five five one naming of facilities? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain? That motion has carried. Matthew, would you please read the motion of number three?
Thank you. I move we approve policy P six one four one dot five one enrollment in high school advanced courses or programs as a second reading.
Can I please have a second?
Second.
I have Liz's second discussion, please.
Again, we tried to, I, I think the biggest. Reach that we had for this was to make sure that all children, all students at high school in particular are. Encouraged to take advanced courses. We want, I don't, I don't want to ever hear Martin became scholar once again say, why am I the only student fellow in this class? And in addition to that, as you said, Kim, and it's. It struck a chord with me because you said you can't take tests. And I remember that I, I, I took a test, a course in reading at URI many, many years ago at the graduate level. And the instructor came to me and he said, if you take the final, you're gonna get a B in this course. So I'm gonna give you research to do instead. See, and that's the way we should be looking at all, all students. If a kid wants to take the, the advanced course, he should not, or she should not be excluded by somebody else. That's where we are at this.
I couldn't be more proud of this board for looking at a policy that could really affect change like this. I mean, I am so proud. It really causes me to.
Well, it's your leadership.
Well, no, it's, it's yours too. It's a combination.
Any further discussion, oh, Dean.
So, first things first. Become over time more and more confused that may just have to do with my entry. So we have policy and regulations and for the last couple of rounds, I've heard people say, well, let's not bother with the backside regulation, that's not. So who does? Promulgator, so in other words, we approve policy and then regulation is somebody else's.
That's my job.
That's yours.
To put it into action, how does it look in the schools? How do we implement this thing?
So you write the regulating.
I like to bring it together so the board has a chance and opportunity to also take a look at the regulations. You know, and if we feel that there's a problem with the process. You know, I can then bring it back to the staff. I think that we worked as hard on the regulations. I think so too.
So you do work on the regulations.
Well, they do give suggestions, I mean, but that's typically what used to happen in the good old days or in the older days. Is that policy was set by the board, it was given then to the superintendent to work with staff to figure out how does it get implemented in the schools. And we just, under my leadership, I've actually tried to do it in tandem. So that we really work with the, with the staff around the policy and the regulations so that they have their input. And I think it just makes it a little more transparent.
I have a, let me start with a logistics question. My, my notes are back on the, on the regulation side, but they're tied together.
Yeah.
I'd rather not have. Be told, you, I'm not sure in the meeting, of course. Oh, I'm sorry, that's on the backside, but these are questions that pertain to the policy because the regulation's meant to implement the policy. So I've been thinking about this and the desire, and I share it, to. Set more kids on the path, for whatever the reason they're not on the path to take advanced courses, they've written themselves off. As I've said before, they just know, that's not for me, that's for the other kids kind of thing, that's phenomenal. Do we anticipate, if the program is successful, if the approach is successful. A lot more kids taking AP and if so. Are we going to increase the number of classes? Are we talking about filling out the classes that we have now, depends on the current attendance level? Or are we going to say, well, we're pretty close to full up now and rather than add a class, what we're gonna do is we're simply going to. It's gonna be more competitive to get in. But the reason why I say that is when I see things like. You know, your patent, your prior academic performance is not an exclusive, you know, indicator of whether you get it, I'm thinking. Well, now. Are, if we're, if we're gonna be expanding, so for example, if we had X number of kids taking AP courses. And we're really successful, we have another fifty percent show up and say, I want to take these AP courses as well, or the ID or whatever. But we're not gonna be adding. But we're not going to be adding. We're gonna basically just could be bringing in more chairs in the other room or having more chairs built. I guess it depends on the room. I just have a, um, I, I'd like to see what the logistics look like for this.
So can I just add this piece? Um, the board has been very interested in class size at the high school. And I've been very transparent at, as giving it to you like it is. And we have really been underrepresented. We have very few kids taking the I, AP and ID. I don't know if the COVID hit also impacted it, but we've been able with our, with the plan that Fitch has put into place about encouraging kids, getting them ready, also giving support during that time to increase our numbers. So instead of having four or five, and of course now we're, you know, we've, we've doubled it or we've even gone beyond that. So there is still room to grow. And what you're doing is so then those kids aren't taking, we don't have, um, in, in eleventh and twelfth, this is considered AP, ID, ECE. They're considered the honors level, honors and beyond. I mean, it's honors level work. So those students are then taking these courses, so you'll have fewer in the college level courses. So it's just a shift. Right now, there's room to fill them up because I'd love to see them at twenty or more.
So the other question I have is this, and that is the, the, the regulation anyway, side of it, and it's also been mentioned here tonight that the problem is not a general problem or not merely a general problem of there are kids. What I'm hearing is there are certain kids that you were mostly focused on. And so when we are going to be applying resources to help kids along, will the resources be directed to the kids that we think need the help to get into the AP courses? Or just certain kids? Because if it's the former, then what you're really doing is, is you're saying, well, all kids will get help regardless of their actual ethnicity or race. And then essentially crossing our fingers and hoping that at the end of the day, we will see in the AP and other core advanced courses, the representation that we expect. So if our student body on the whole is X, Y, and Z percentage by, you know, pick the colors of the rainbow, that's what we will see in the advanced courses. Is that what's going on? That you hope that by helping everybody, by playing resources to everybody, that's how it'll turn out? Or are you going to be focusing resources by race and ethnicity?
We are not. We are giving equal opportunities to our students.
Yeah, that, that's a decades old phrase.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say something. I really think that is, that has been, um, a goal of, of Fitch for a long time. Um, having been there to, through two thousand eighteen. And having taught AP and ID courses. There have been students that I personally have taught that were lacking in skills, but had the desire to do so. And their supports, whether, doesn't matter who they were, it, I, I, you know, it didn't matter if they were green, purple, or orange. Whatever the sport was needed, that was supplied by myself, by other teachers, by their guidance counselors and stuff. So I just think this just encapsulates what has been historically happening that had maybe waned a bit. Um, especially with the, the COVID, but it's now being put into regulation. And I think that's a, a good cover or not cover, it's the wrong word, but a good programming of how we are going to address, you know, these disparity and helping kids realize their potential and realize that they can do this with encouragement and supports. It doesn't matter what you look like. It matters what you want to do.
My question is the disparity was there, we, we've mentioned COVID, there's no question COVID is having.
Oh, yeah.
But these disparities were there before and you're saying that we have not because otherwise it would be indictment of our system of our district that somehow we have failed certain students based on race in recent years, not fifty years ago, sixty years ago, a hundred years ago. And that now we're going to be doing something different. But what you're saying is, okay, COVID set us back, but now we're going to be doing what we, what we've been doing all along, what you did when you were a teacher was admirable. But it isn't just COVID. So I'm, I'm, I'm holding judgment, uh, preserving judgment on this. I'm crossing my fingers and hoping that it works.
But you also have to remember before, we didn't have the NYPD program, which is a rigorous program.
I agree. You've got to start earlier.
Yes. And that's exactly where I'm hoping to see the growth because, and the kids getting the feeling that I can do this rigorous stuff because let's face it, the NYPD is sixth grade to tenth. It's not six, seventh, and eighth. It's six through ten. AP and ID really begin for the most part in eleventh and twelfth. So, um, you know, I just see this as just formulating what we need, what we've been doing, but now we've got it in right.
And I think we have more, like you said, of a foundation of support starting earlier on. And we want to really continue that rigor and relevance even into the elementary. So all kids have that opportunity.
Any further discussion? Hearing them. All those in favor, um, of approving, uh, the policy P six one four one dash five one enrollment in high school advanced courses or programs, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Dean has abstained. Perfect. That's great. All right. So we're moving on to motion number two. I, two. Um, and Liz, would you be willing to read? We are, we are on the meeting schedule. Yeah.
Okay. To approve the twenty twenty three Board of Education meeting schedule.
Can I have a second, please? Right, discussion.
Um, I'm sure you didn't notice, but the September twenty fifth meeting is Young People. Would it be possible to adjust that to the twenty sixth? Let's see. September twenty fifth, regular meeting. Could that be adjusted by one?
Yes, but we, I'm also looking at your communications. We probably should do the same thing. Your communication.
Might not be a bad.
Yeah. So the twenty sixth and.
Thank you. Um, I was actually going to ask about making sure that we are holding some. For the other, um, people who are, um, chairs of the committees, um, does it match up?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Policy should be at six o'clock the second. Yeah.
Joan, are you getting these? Ms. Joan?
I, I've got it, Joan. I can cross reference with you.
Yes, I am getting it.
Okay, thank you, my friend.
It also says in room five. The policy.
Well, I don't know that we can do that for a whole nother year, but virtual, yeah, because we're kind of coming back to community.
And I just have a question. We have a communications meeting um, at five o'clock in central office room four. And then we go a regular meeting, which only happens, you know, once a month or whatever, but we, we have to be at the town hall annex. So I mean, that's going to cut into our time.
Yeah.
Communication.
So one of the things that, nice pickup. So one of the things that maybe, um, either Ms. Joan or Joyce can do to see if we can move the communications committee over to one of the smaller, um, meeting rooms, um, at the annex.
That would be helpful.
Okay, so could we, um, can you do that?
We used to do that.
But I, but I, but not put it in, and now does it then become a special meeting, the communications?
Right.
Okay.
So what are you supposed to do?
Okay, so the communications, if you looked at the communication schedule, right? And right now it has it on C, um, central office room four. We are looking at seeing whether we can have a community room at the annex. But we're not going to be able to know that. So when we vote, do we, do we say site to be determined and wait, but then it becomes, um, for you, it becomes a special meeting for the rest of that time?
For another year.
Yeah.
Yeah, by law, at some point, you're supposed to adopt your regular meeting schedule.
This is.
The regular, the regular meeting schedule. So that's all the way on the right.
Okay.
Okay, everything else is at our discretion as long as you provide the correct notice ahead of time.
Okay.
We're having this other meeting, and you can change the regular meetings too, but referring to committee meetings and county meetings.
Right.
As long as you give the requisite notice of the time and place and they'll start the meeting ahead of the time that you, you know, announced and all that.
Right.
You're fine.
Right. Okay, so like, all right, that's perfect.
Question for council. Uh, could we adopt this as presented? And then, once we know if we can do the annex, we can amend the, amend the.
I think we can find out about the annex tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's good. What I hear from Dean, it doesn't matter. We just have to make sure that the notice is ahead of time where we're going to be meeting.
That's all that's really required.
And that's really, what's really required is to make sure that our regular voting meeting is noted.
That's a dual requirement. Even without that specific requirement, the council is the same way, but even without that specific requirement, it's still required under state law, all public bodies to announce your meeting. Twenty-four, forty-eight hours ahead of time is going to be posted.
Yeah.
Tom Clark is going to do that and all that jazz.
Okay.
For the people to know when and where.
Right.
Kim, can I come, come back to the policy when we're done with this?
Yes. We're back to you.
Oh, okay. My, we met up under special circumstances for policy this year, this term, this year because of, of, um, membership availability. We don't know who's going to be on that.
That's right.
So I'm suggesting that we stay at five o'clock in central office room five as, as it stands. And if, because as I said, we don't know who's going to be on the committee and that this time and place.
That's right, because, um, you're right, because as of December, we, we could have all new committees. So.
Well, that could affect any of these schools.
Well, not, not the, not the committee, the whole, not the regular, but we're having subcommittees because, um.
We do them every year.
Yeah. Yeah.
When does that information? It'll come after this is already been.
Yeah. So I, I, I'm not trying to make this a more difficult process than it is. It looks like it's fine the way it is. And the worst we have to do is that we just put a special on, on the headline of the, of the meeting.
If you add a meeting, but if you move a meeting, we're not going to be holding it this stable. We're going to be holding it at that date.
Okay. All right. I feel comfortable with that. Any further discussion?
Just not to forget about September twenty fifth to twenty sixth.
We, I've got that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule for the Gotten Board of Education, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Um, Mass, um, Beverly or Jay, would either one of you like to read the motion for number three? No, we need to do, we need to do all three of them. No, we need to do all three of them. All right. So I'm going to read the motion to approve the preferred, um, class size guidelines. Um, can I have a second, please? I, William? Okay, discussion. So this happens to be on our template. This is, I believe that we put it on the template, um, in October so that when the superintendent went to go meet and with the, continued to meet with the staff to go over how much of the staffing that they need, the superintendent and the superintendent have an idea about what the board preferred size is. Um, and so that's what we, that's what we're going to be basing our budget on. So I believe, I believe that this is what this was last year. Is that correct? Susan?
Yes.
Excellent, my question.
Okay. It's very, it's what we really worked out for last year, but we're saying a lot, yeah, a lot of time was spent on that. So I think it can continue.
Do I have any other questions about that? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the preferred maximum class size as, as detailed, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. William, would you be willing to read the motion of number four?
Motion to approve the Board of Education covering the cost of reduced meals for a portion of the fiscal year twenty-three school year.
Can I have a second, please? That would be Matthew. Jay, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, yes, so we discussed this, uh, at the finance meeting and so given that there are just three schools now who are not covered by the, um, the one hundred percent, um, CEP program, somebody's going to have to help me with the, uh, what CEP stands for.
Community. Community Eligibility Program.
Right. So, um, we had discussed at finance whether or not, um, we could at least cover the cost of the reduced meals at those three schools that are not covered. So to be clear, to, to be clear, um, at the covered schools, no one's currently paying for lunch. At the three schools that are not covered by CEP, which would be the high school, uh, Charles Barnum and Northeast Academy, there is obviously still free and reduced lunches being offered based on those who a, apply and the, uh, the guidelines. And so the idea was, could we also, um, pay for all of those students at those three schools who are under-reduced? And maybe Ken can bring up, um, a visual to explain. And maybe he can take it from here as to how he came to the numbers.
Sure. Um, so this, uh, this schedule here.
Can you make it a little bit bigger, Ken? Perfect.
This schedule here, we, uh, Ernie, Koshmeyer, myself, um, met and updated this. We have a new number of the reduced price students for those three schools that's identified there. Eighty-four at the elementary, uh, ninety at secondary. And what we calculated first, uh, was assuming a hundred percent participation for the entire school year and that cost would have been twenty-two thousand forty-five dollars uh, because of the, um, smart funds that, uh, the, that the, um, state of Connecticut has provided. As mentioned before, all meals are currently free. And so we're anticipating that that will last for forty percent of the school year. We're, we're currently, uh, anticipating that those funds will last us through the Christmas holiday, which is great.
And we thought we'd have to, you know, switch it over sometime in November. So I'm excited to get this information out to families. I just want to be really accurate. That's why this is so important to vote on.
Uh, and so if, if we, uh, do the calculation just based upon sixty percent, that brings us to the thirteen thousand two seventy-six number. And then, uh, uh, Ernie had a, has a anticipated participation number, whether the student is, is not in for the day or whether they don't take the lunch or breakfast. Uh, these are the participation rates that he, uh, that he generally sees. And so we're anticipating that the actual cost, if we wanted to, uh, uh, pay for these reduced prices for the reduced price, uh, students, uh, would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of eight thousand dollars for, for this year.
And what schools would this cover?
This would cover a high school, uh, Charles Barnum and, uh, Northeast.
Who don't participate in the CEP.
And the board typically has to pay for meals that haven't been paid for. And that has been at a cost, um, of tens of thousands of dollars.
Luckily, we haven't had to deal with that for a couple of years because, uh, because of COVID, uh, uh, the USDA has been paying for all of the meals for the past few years, but that's, uh, has ended, uh, or currently, uh, being supported by the smart firms, smart funds from the state. Uh, but, uh, as we mentioned before, those will run out participating at the end of this calendar year.
Our hope is that by parents filling out the free and reduced lunch forms that will really capture the, the people who need to have this as a resource and it will also help to support us in the future. We're going after C E, C E P. So that it could be that we could become eligible as a district, which is phenomenal. So I'll make sure they get that message.
Is there a possibility that with phones still coming in, that one of these three schools might reach the threshold of these? Is there a possibility that with phones still coming in, that one of these three schools might reach the threshold of these C E P schools?
For next year.
For next year.
So we're talking about the rest of this year?
We're just trying to take care of this year, and then hopefully the data that I collect will give us more comment in the future for the the four that we have, I think are secure for the next four years, for this one being included.
So if, if if Ernie's projection isn't correct, which is this eight thousand, we, we might be looking at thirteen thousand or somewhere, somewhere in between the two.
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be anymore.
Than thirteen.
But we anticipate it would be that.
Okay, and, and where would that thirteen thousand come from?
So uh, we could use the, our pastor funds to cover that.
Okay, if we need to.
Yeah, we, we have some funding put aside in, in, in district budget that would cover what Susan mentioned before, uh, unpaid, unpaid balances. But uh, if that wasn't sufficient, we could use our best.
So can I just clarify?
Yes.
So what I hear you saying is that there's these, the, these three schools have not qualified for this program where everybody gets free, free reduced lunch, right, or free lunch. These three schools have pockets of students that are paying out themselves, right, or their families on. This would take for free and reduced lunch students who have filled out the proper format forms, that would assume their debt debt. But there's still going to be a group of the kids that are going to have to pay.
And they would be the students that probably are more likely to be able to pay.
Then, what I said, that's fine, what I'm, what I'm, I'm wondering is just like, um, no easy way to say this. You know, can, how much would it cost for us to be able to assume the cost for everybody?
Twenty-two thousand, right?
Is that the twenty-two thousand?
No, no, that, that's not count the, to, to pay for the, the full price student, well, that hasn't been calculated here.
Okay.
Uh, we have.
But it's much more.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a very large.
Large.
Hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands, that takes, thank you, I needed that thing put in perspective, not only for myself, but for anybody else who's listening.
That's right, now, if everybody fills out their form and I get to be able to re-present this for C E P, it could be that our whole district goes that way, so that would be really good news.
That would be excellent.
Yeah.
Jay?
And um, my understanding is that at least one of the schools was very, very close to C E P this year. I, I don't have the exact figures, but, you know, so important to start that early in the year to let people know. Because none of these schools um were under complete C I, uh, C E P until just a few years ago.
Right, right, exactly.
So, you know, it is moving in that direction for better or for worse. But um, I mean, I, I think this is a, a step toward making sure that everyone, you know, um, who, who wants to take a meal will, but keep in mind, it's not that anybody's ever turned away.
Right, that's exactly right.
Good point, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the Board of Education covering the cost of reduced meals for a portion of the FY twenty-three school year, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that motion is carried. Jay, do you have any communications or letters or comments?
Um, I just wanted to say that um, a- as usual, it was a pleasure to uh, attend the Dr. Martin Luther King Scholarship Awards Dinner uh, last Thursday. Um, once again, uh, Dr. Ackerman and members of the, the Board of Directors there worked with the students to, to help them find their voice, and boy, did they find their voice. Um, so it's always inspiring uh, to attend those. And I also was able, unfortunately, it was a, a, a short period of time, but I was able to drop in on the Fitch Falcon Marching Band Home Show this past Saturday, and uh I'm always impressed with the amount of work and talent uh, that goes into, to those shows, and then, of course, uh, the marching band is appearing. You know, many more of those across the state after that. And I received the same emails, I believe, as everyone else.
Thank you, Jay. Beverly?
I received the same emails as everyone else, thank you.
Dean?
Same emails, a question, I don't think I'm going to answer it. My wife, a couple of years ago, made up the signs for the home show, and they were stored at the school. We don't have them, and the hope was that they could be reused for this year's home show, and they wound up having basically had signs reprinted up, so it's, it's a rock in the shoe. My wife is, she's out of town now, but she's thinking, where are the signs? Why do they have to make us so, Kenny, you know, you tell me, tell me what happened to the signs. Uh, I know you can't right now, you may not have been doing it, but somebody, somebody misplaced those signs. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Matthew?
I'm good, thank you.
Liz?
Well, um, as an alum of the Fitch High School Band, I was blown away by their performance. It was probably one of the best at every, in looking at the entire scope of the program the other night. But I also want to give a shout out to our, our middle school band, that was an impressive um national anthem, they did a beautiful job, and that was, that was really amazing. Um, and also a thank you to the Navy volunteers that were there because that was in favor, hysterical, I love the guys doing the dance. Um, I think my husband actually took a video of it, embarrassed to say, but um, I just, you know, a shout out to all the band parents, the boosters who have really put this together, and um, you know, we celebrate, we, we, we always get a lot of, you know, some negative comments and stuff, but I also want to say, you know, shout out to all those people who have given so much of their time, and um, it was just absolute joy to watch that game, that um, competition. I wish I knew how Fitch had scored, um, because they should have probably scored it, in my opinion, in the nineties. And uh, it's just an amazing evolution, and I'm hoping to see the strength of the music program come back to, to rebuild again because last year's band was small, this year's band is again, still small, but it was ten more kids and only five seniors, whereas last year was fifteen seniors and five regular kids, so it's building, and I just want to shout out to the um, the music department at Fitch High School for helping to start to rebuild that. Um, and I received the same letters and, you know, the emails from everybody else.
Andrea?
This is the first band of gala that I missed since I've been on the board, and I apologize for that, and I'm truly sorry for me. But I wanted to thank everybody for all of the kind words and, and wonderful responses that we had to the Martin Luther King Scholarship. It was the sixteen students of, of the area, those are high schools in the living county. And they practiced at my house for six weeks, and, and I wish a shout out to Lola Collect, who was also a member and is helping with the, with the speeches, and they were good at my house, they were really good. But when they thought, oh, and that classroom was in front of them, and the audience was in front of them, you could see the electricity. It was like watching Elsa Lancaster in one of those old movies where the electricity just flowed down. It was fabulous, so I just want to say to Isaiah Anderson and Yan Buto and Aisha Hasini and Kyra Robinson, you were fabulous along with all of your, your colleagues.
I can't wait to see them again in January, when we go to the church.
William, do you have anything?
Um, no, I just, well, I just wanted to agree with the list about the, the music department and the marching bands, uh, as well as the, the choruses, the, the formal band and the orchestra, uh, really great this year. Um, I hope it'll be really exciting to um, see them this Wednesday. Great. I'm excited, so hopefully everybody can go.
So I received um, many of the same emails, I was also blown away with the M L K, the Sounds by the Sea. Um, I also, along with Susan and Rita, attended the Hall of Fame for the Teachers' Hall of Fame on Sunday, and that was a really cool thing to kind of um, watch, um, and to see people who I haven't seen in a couple of years, that was really wonderful. Um, and I did talk about meeting with Mayor Melendez and Moderator Rusk. Um, so we talked about the fields, but we also um, talked about a meeting with Susan and John and Sam about some safety. Um, uh, we had applied for the town, um, looking at their certification around the ARPA, around safety, can, um, safety, and um, we did not make the top twenty list, and so our concern was how do we, how do we get back on the list? Um, and so we're going to have a meeting about that, and we will keep you posted on that. Um, and just to remind people that the CADE convention is going to happen in November, that's the eighteenth and nineteenth. It is um, a chock full of information for those who, uh, who want. Um, please note on the different dates that are um, on our things. It doesn't have our, like, music and other things that are happening, but it does have our um, sort of business meetings. Um, and then do I have suggested agenda items? Jay?
Uh, yes, so um, given that we have now had the second reading of the facility naming policy, I'd, I'd like to um, come back around to a suggestion that Dr. Ackerman brought up uh, several years ago about naming a um, portion of a facility for Dr. James Mitchell, uh, former superintendent, uh, former president of the M L K Scholarship Fund, current chairman of the Board of L and M Hospital. And it seemed to me that um, because he had such a district-wide influence, um, that perhaps we could consider a future agenda item to name the high school library after him. My understanding is that has never been named for anybody, and so I'd like to put that forward as a possible future agenda item.
Perfect. Thank you, Jay. Alright. Did you have?
Um, an update on the, I understand we might have some update on the mentoring program, perhaps that could be on the next agenda. And um, love an update on um, whether or not the federal grant for tutors and mentors is something that
Sorry, I wrote this down on the wrong sheet of paper, and it's, it won't work.
Um, the next regular meeting, we're going to need to vote on the adoption of curricula. That is, the going to be at the curriculum committee that they're.
Yep.
Forward, so I just want to make sure that, that um.
The committee of the whole.
Radar.
It's going to be on the committee of the whole, and then it's going to be on our regular.
Right, right, exactly.
Is there something about the next meeting's date?
Um, I, I think we'll, um, we'll there's a, um, there's people who are, are coming back, um, I know that Jay, you stated that you were going to be out of town um, on the twenty-ninth, I don't know about Rita, Rita's not here, um, but there is some, there is some conversation um, from the people that have come to me that to move our Monday twenty-eighth meeting to the twenty-ninth um, to accommodate on that, and so.
For what?
For a regular board meeting.
Okay.
Was there a reason? Um, for, for, um, I think Jay, and there might have been a couple of other people out of town, maybe we just need to get, maybe we just need to get attendance.
Yeah.
Um, cleared up.
And that's supposed to be the annex.
And we're, I mean, like, that's the goal.
The goal is the annex.
We'll make sure people know where to go. Alright. I'm going to tell them where to go, and, go ahead, Andrea.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstained. Say what else, the other one, not true, yes, good night, Grace.